Good afternoon. In accordance with the Sessions forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety, as amended, this committee of adjustment, the committee of adjustment of the City of Toronto recalled to order committee adjustment considers applications for variances from the provinces of the zoning and that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and also a consent to survey property to create new lots. My name is Yim, Yim Chan. I will be chairing this afternoon's hearing, and I'd like to introduce our panel today is Mr. Gary McCain, Sahib Bayat, and also Peter Weed. And our deputy secretary, head treasurer today is Nicole Evenard. And I also would like to acknowledge the land that we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississauga of the Credit, the Anasabi, the Chippewa, and the Hola Sunni, and the Wanda Peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen and the Mississaugas of Credit. Committee of Adjustment Public Hearing now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submission in person, and others will participate through electronic means through weblogs. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connected with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the opinion of participating via video or audio only. A virtual participant, all virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry, and when your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called to speak. And those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist status when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled, and you will only be visible during your five-minute speaking time. All those other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be staged as attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, committee adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through weblogs are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist control during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. How to receive a copy of the decision? People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on any application must fill out a decision requests card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the committee adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body, the T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. And if you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decisions to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal committee adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decision of the committee adjustment. The appealed instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. And allow I will read out the procedure of the hearing. When an applicant is uncontested, application is not contested, the agent or applicant might proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment when you are reaching your five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance, or, and staff and members cannot accept any materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first, and then will make a presentation to committee on the application, and please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposal of the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, to make sure the revised application is accurate, and all those entitled to notice are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we will call all the speakers in the hearing room and then participating through weblogs. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they finish the presentation. When all the speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only on those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application then will be taken into committee for decision. And at this time, I would like to know whether we have any declaration of conflict of interest from the panel, from the, from our staff? No? Okay. And I will also, the next, I would like to know whether there's some file be closed for the afternoon session?
Through you, Madam Chair, there are no files to be closed or withdrawn this afternoon.
Withdrawn. Do we have also some deferral requests?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. We have one deferral request for this afternoon's agenda. That is item number twenty-five, municipal address of four, five, three, Eglinton Avenue West, file number A zero six zero six slash two five T E Y. The agent is online, and there's no registered speakers for this item.
And we can deal with it now, right?
Yes.
So, okay, item twenty-five is four, three, no, sorry, four, five, three, Eglinton Avenue West. This is to alter the existing two-story mixed-use building by converting a portion of the basement level storage space into two hotel units, by converting the ground floor garage into one hotel unit and adding six hotel units to the second level. Also, the remaining storage space or boiler room, or it's called walk-in, walk-in features with the basement level, as well as the existing non-residential uses, which is a restaurant and clothing store on the ground floor, will be maintained and unaltered. So, we also receive a survey site plan for plan elevations, revised site plans for plan elevations, and also nine photographs of this property, and cover letter from the agent, and a deferral request from the agent, and also email corresponding from the agent. We also receive MetroLink staff report. We are ready for the agent, and tell us why your request of deferral, please.
Peter, you're unmuted. Peter, can you hear us?
By the way, do we have other speakers other than the applicant?
Through the chair, we're going to attempt to call the agent, since they're not connecting. One second.
Did the request, written request state the reason, right? Maybe we can, we could come.
Through the chair, the written request was indicating that they're awaiting a new zoning review.
Okay. Because maybe if there are no other speakers, maybe we can just take the reasons from the written request and make a decision on that, right?
Yeah, let's see, one moment if staff are able to connect.
Yeah, we make another attempt, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, we can technically hear this one in order then, since the agent isn't there.
Okay, yeah, we give you some time, yeah.
Let's at least, wait, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Give them some time.
Okay, so let's move back to the first item in the afternoon. It's number twenty. The address is seventy-eight to eighty-two Yorkville Avenue. This is obtain as a consent to, to stratify servants and to create new easements and right-of-way. And we receive a copy of the survey and draft, our plan of the survey, sorry, and cover letter from the agent, and explanation of the easements, and property index map from the agent. We also receive comments from community planning and also development engineering. And this all the material we have received, and we are ready, yeah, we are ready for the agent.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent here in person and no other speakers.
Okay, do we have another speaker other than the agent? Okay. Okay, can you tell us your first and last name and your address for a record, please?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, members of the committee. Last name is Keear, spelled K-E-H-A-R, first initial R. I'm counsel for the applicant here related to seventy-eight and eighty-two Yorkville Avenue.
Okay, thank you. So I think that usually with this complex development, we would like to have very brief presentation. It's just to guide us through the major thing, what you want to do.
Absolutely. Glad to do that. So let me first off start by telling you that my client is First Capital Realty, Inc. Their related company is First Capital Holdings, Ontario Corporation. That second company is the registered owner of the property.
Okay.
The property itself is effectively already a strata parcel. So above it, there is a condominium tower. Below it, there is a parking structure. My client doesn't own the condominium tower. It doesn't own the parking structure. It just owns the strata in between. What we're having in front of you is really a technical severance.
Okay.
Okay? It's to, if you were to stand there on Yorkville Avenue, and the property is sort of mid-block between Bay Street and Hazelton Avenue, it's already, you'll see commercial at grade. That grade is, goes the, at grade, and then it goes up to the second story. And in it, if you were looking at it today, you would see Sunglass Hut on one side, and then you'd see Keith, it's a retail store on the other.
Okay.
And what we're trying to do is just sever that strata.
Okay.
So that it matches the actual store. So Keith is its own conveyable lot. Sunglass Hut is its own conveyable lot. And then you heard this thing about easements?
Yeah.
All that's about is between the two stores, there's already shared servicing. So one store actually has the elevator that goes up to the second story. The other store has the, we'll call it like the mechanical room that's up on the second story. So it's just to make sure that they can service amongst one another. So there's a bunch of reciprocal easements between the two lots to be created. But nothing is changing. So to the extent that strata has relationships with the condo above it, those relationships stay the same. To the extent there's relationships with the parking structure below, those relationships stay the same. All we're doing is building easements between the two, so they can operate like they were operating as one. This really is a technical severance. I can tell you, we've done this before. I was here about a year and a half ago for the same client in, on Yorkville Avenue. If you just go up to the Chanel store, which is just about, we'll call it half, maybe a lot or two away, Chanel and Bella Siaga store, they were all one. We got, saw the severance, same kind of relationship, parking structure below, condo above, we got the severance. You would have seen in the record, there's no opposition from planning staff, and that's not surprising, given it's a technical consent. ECS has a number of conditions to make sure that those easements get created and get addressing, and all of those conditions are not unlike the one we had at one hundred Yorkville in relation to the Chanel stores, where our client has no concern with any of those conditions. And so if you pull up, there's a draft R-plan. There's two pages. That's one of the pages. And if you scroll down, you'll see, so each page represents, one's ground floor, one is second floor.
Okay.
The purple is going to become one lot. The yellow's the other lot. The yellow is where the Sunglass Hut store is. The purple's where the Keith store is. And then you'll see in some of the drawings, you'll see some like hashing. That hashing is identifying the specific easements between the stores. And then there's, between the entire stores, there's going to be a blanket easement, to make sure if I got a pipe in the other store, I've got the legal right to go into that store and fix the pipe, just to make sure all the servicing works. So it's pretty straightforward. The reasons for the consent in terms of the relevant tests, the PPS fifty-one twenty-four, those are all laid out in our actual letter, so I won't go into those details, but I'll suggest all the tests are met. So, subject to questions you might have, that's in summary what I was hoping to raise with you this morning.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just have a very small question in the engineering, with the engineering development conditions. Are these the time, with time limits, and within certain time that you have to comply?
Yeah, I think it's going to be the ordinary consent lapsing timeline of, I guess it's two years, where we'd have to fulfill those conditions in that timeline, but there's no specific reduced timeline. And I can tell you, some of these conditions, we're already moving forward with, because there are things that are related to the site just down the street that we're already working on.
Yeah, it's usually not, it's usually on the day that it be approved, then they will count the time, they start counting the time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just for information only, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, any other question? No, no, we have no more question. Now we're in committee.
Well, just, I couldn't.
Oh, you have, you have one, please.
So you were, like, development engineering would be concerned about things like separate water meters for, for the various parcels, and there's some discussion, I don't know how far, how wide it would have to be, but essentially a cost-sharing agreement of services. So that's, that's happening, that's cooking?
Yeah, so in terms of separate water meters, that's one of the conditions, we're going to do that. In terms of a cost-share agreement, that's actually being prepared for the one hundred site that I mentioned earlier. And we're going to take that same agreement for the purposes of satisfying this consent, because it's going to be the same type of relationship between the two stores that are creating here as they were there. So it's already in process, and we're working with staff to finalize it.
Thanks for coloring up your plans. It's much easier to visualize, you know, what's, what's being severed off and what's being retained.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good presentation. Appreciate that, yeah.
That's great.
And through the chair, the engineering, construction services, development engineering memo is on the screen, so they do have their additional conditions, in addition to the standard conditions. They have their additional conditions, and we have that on the screen with respect to cost-sharing and water meters, et cetera.
Yeah, so I just trust that you have received this information, you know.
We, we did, and we're perfectly satisfied with those conditions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're in committee. So, yeah.
Sure, I'll start off, Chief, I mean. I thank the agent for reminding us about the previous application, because I think I remembered being on that, on the committee at that time as well, and make eminent sense. I was trying to figure out this one. Thanks for the explanation. I think it's quite clear. This is a very technical request, and has no impact on, on anybody in the area, so I don't think there's any reason for not approving this, as is other than with the standard engineering, standard engineering conditions that have been applied. I don't believe there's any other conditions, so I'd like to move approval.
Okay.
My colleagues are good.
Engineering conditions, yeah.
Just engineering.
And, and, yeah, Mr. Weed, second, all in favor? In amistapoof, thank you for coming, Mr. Poof.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm twenty-one with two, five, seven, two, five, two, five, nine, and two ninety-one, Lake Shore Boulevard, and two hundred Queen's Key, sorry, Queen's Key East, and also two Small Street. This is to obtain consent to survey the property into two lots for the purpose of establishing separate ownership, and to create new easement and right-of-way. And we receive a survey copy and the plan of survey, and the draft survey, and a, and a survey, and sixteen photographs of the subject property, cover letter from the, from the agent, and corresponding from, from the agent provision for pass prepared by the survey and others' report and tree protection plan we receive for, also the site-specific zoning bylaw. We receive comment from engineering, development engineering, and also staff report for community planning, and we receive advisories, comment from MetroLink, and we are ready for the agent or the applicant.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent here in person and no other speakers.
Yeah. Yeah, welcome. So give us your first and last name and your address for record, yeah.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Anne Benedetti of Goodman's.
Yeah.
Goodman's address is three, 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 Bay Street, and I represent the applicant, Keyside Impact Limited Partnership and Keyside Block One, Inc. As the name suggests, Keyside Block One, Inc. is the owner of the lands known as Blocks One and Two of Keyside, and you can see a image of the waterfront area with Keyside on the slide deck. And QILP is Waterfront Toronto's chosen partner for the development of the Keyside lands.
Okay. So here, again, since it's quite a large site, and quite a few owners, just give us a very brief presentation and just to guide us to main point, what you're doing, not too much detail.
Yeah, happy, happy to do that, Madam Chair, and I'm here with our planner from USI, Anne Benaroya, and representatives from QILP, which is a partnership between Dream Unlimited and Great Gulf. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So Keyside, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, is a large piece of land made up of five blocks, Blocks One, Two, Three B, Four, and Five, that you can see. This application is in regard to Blocks One and Two, which you can see, and it's to implement the development of Keyside. Blocks One and Two have been zoned. They were zoned last summer. Blocks Three, Four, and Five are currently in the process of being zoned. Go to the next slide, please. So our goal today is to sever an area called Block One A from the balance of Blocks One and Two, creating two separate land parcels to allow for the development implementation as contemplated. So it will facilitate the development of the first phase of Keyside, which is to include five hundred and fifty affordable housing units. And the division of these Blocks One and Two has always been contemplated, and the bylaw that was passed last summer includes a severance clause that anticipated this severance.
Okay.
Can you move on? Thank you. So there's the Blocks One and Two today. You see on the south half, there's a commercial parking lot. On the north half, whoop, there we go. We have, it's a Porsche car dealership, and you can see two buildings, and they also operate the parking lot in between on a lease, which ends on December thirty-first of this year. Going to the next slide. Here you can see the proposed severance. We've got the conveyed lot in blue, the retained lot in red. So what's evident when you look at this is that the severance does have an implication for the existing lot. So what we've done in anticipation of that, that's why you see the easements. So if you could go to the next slide, you'll see that we've created easements to ensure on a temporary basis that there's no issue with the ongoing operation of the site. So there's an easement for the piece of the building that is over onto the retained lands. Go to the next slide, please. You can see there are parts for access over the conveyed lands, and the next slide, there are easements for access over the retained lands. So the application is supported by the planning opinion from Urban Strategies, which concludes that the application is appropriate, has regard to the applicable criteria under fifty-one twenty-four of the Planning Act. It's consistent and conforms with the relevant provincial and municipal planning policy, including conforming with the official, applicable, official plan, and meeting the intent of the zoning bylaw. It incorporates appropriate measures to ensure the existing buildings can remain temporarily, and the site can function until the Keyside development commences, and it will facilitate the implementation of the broader Keyside development. If you kind of go a couple slides ahead, sorry, I should have let you know. One more, please. You'll see also, oh, one back, thanks. As you mentioned, Madam Chair, there is a report from city planning.
Yeah.
And there are reports from ECS and Transportation Services. City planning report concludes that the severance conforms with the applicable official plan, meets the intent of the zoning bylaw, and meets the criteria set out in the Planning Act. There are no concerns raised by Transportation Services or ECS, and no additional conditions are requested or required. So we appreciate the opportunity to appear before the committee and request the severance as we continue to move the Keyside development forward in cooperation with the city and Waterfront Toronto.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
I have one, just the convey, the conveyed land. What, what is going to be, the part that conveyed to back to the city? Is that what it is?
No, so these conveyed lands, Madam Chair, are for, to move forward with the development as contemplated with our agreements between Waterfront Toronto and the Master Developer Agreement, and it is in regard to, I mentioned, QILP is made up of Dream Unlimited and Great Gulf. This will make a division so those owners can continue to develop the separate parcels, as noted.
Oh, I see, just that conveyed to another ownership, then they can.
That's right, so it can implement the development of the affordable housing and the condominium development.
Understand. And so now, at the moment, it's just gone through rezoning, and then no site plan application has been filed yet, right? It's still early.
Oh, the site plan applications have been filed for the entire block. We've got five, a master site plan application, and four others all filed now, Madam Chair.
I thought it's just, just parking lots, man. Okay, thank you.
No, we, we definitely want to build Keyside and have that affordable housing accelerated.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Now, we don't have any more question, we're in committee now. So anyone want to take this on? It seemed to, very good presentation, by the way. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, yeah. The materials were really helpful in terms of understanding the context, and I was happy to see that report from city, from community planning, you know, confirming that this is definitely in line with the OP and with the recent zoning bylaw that was passed. So I will move approval of this consent without condition.
Through the chair with standard consent conditions.
Sorry, pardon me, with standard consent condition.
Just the standard consent, yeah, okay. And standard, understand, all right, so second, please, yeah.
I'll second that, sure.
Yeah, Miss Bay, second, and all in favor? It's approved. Thank you for coming. It's approved unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the committee.
All right, so we done with, do we have to go back to the deferral one, or we just go to order? It's twenty-five, and, yeah, okay. So item number twenty-two, it is three hundred twenty-five Gerard Street East. This is to alter the development standards of a site-specific zoning bylaw for mixed-use building encompassing Tower D and including a podium base building on the land between Dreamers Way and Street G in regards to the facing requirement, and by increasing the height of the mechanical penthouse. A site plan of control application is currently under review and consideration. This building will contain two hundred and seventy-one affordable rental housing units and three, thirty-three thousand one hundred sixty-one square meter of residential gross and three, thirty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-one, uh, square meter of residential gross floor area, and nine-hundred-and-thirteen square meter of ground floor retail space, and one-thousand-one-six, one-hundred-and-sixty square meter of ground floor community space. We receive a site plan for plan, I forgot to mention, a survey, site plan, floor plan, and elevations, three photographs of the property, and a cover letter from the agent, and presentation material from the agent. And we also have a copy of the, uh, site-specific zoning bylaw. And we receive comment from, uh, uh, community planning. And we are ready for the agent or the applicant, yeah.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent in person here and no other speakers.
Oh, okay. Just let me. Thank you. Yes. Yes.
Good afternoon, I'm Emma West from Bows Fields, Inc., Three Church Street.
Yes. And I, I, I think, should we just ask the same thing, for a little presentation? Yeah, sure, yeah, because it's a, uh, it's help us understand faster. Yeah, give us a very brief, yeah, presentation, yeah.
And I do have a presentation that we provided.
Yeah, let's bring the material up before we start the clock, let, let get it ready.
Thank you, and you could actually go to page nine, I'll keep it efficient. So, um, as I said, I'm Emma West, I'm a planner and partner at Bows Fields. I'm the representative for Toronto Community Housing for this application. The site is in the final two phases of the Regent Park revitalization, and specifically, an application related to Building Four A. Uh, the variances are associated with a site plan application for a building that has a ten-story mid-rise component, and a twenty-six-story tower component connected by a one-story base. And as you heard, there are two-hundred-and-seventy-one residential units, of which a hundred-and-thirty-six will be rent geared to income, and a hundred-and-thirty-five new affordable units. There are also ground floor retail and community spaces. So there are only two variances proposed. Um, the first one, you can see on the screen here, is to seek relief from the vertical extent of the mechanical penthouse on a small portion of the mid-rise component. So this is for an additional one-point-five meters of height for the mechanical penthouse. So you can see the pink area on the left side of the screen. That's the, uh, site plan drawing with the mechanical penthouse outlined. And then on the right-hand side, you can see a tiny pink sliver on top of the green. That's the additional one-point-five meters of height being requested for that variance. If we go to the next slide. The second variance is related to the delivery of streets. So in the zoning bylaw amendment that applies to phases Four and Five of the Regent Park revitalization, there is a provision in the zoning bylaw amendment related to the timing of delivery of streets. And so this variance is requesting that this building proceed with construction in advance of the completion of the streets with infrastructure, base asphalt, base, base curb. And, um, that will be delivered later, but the way that it's worded now, that has to be, those roads have to be delivered before you can go above grade with construction. So the roads will be delivered. Also, the site, because it's located on the south side of Gerard, and, um, to the east of Dreamers Way, it does have access from public streets. And so it's not going to be hampered by these roads not being fully delivered before the building comes above grade. So the roads will be delivered, just not at the timing outlined in the zoning bylaw amendment. So those are the two variances requested. Um, in short, it's our opinion that they maintain the general intent and purpose of the official plan, maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. They're minor, and they're desirable and appropriate, uh, for the use of the land. We also note, um, therefore, that they meet the four tests, and that planning staff's, uh, report also indicates no objection to what is being proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, it was very good presentation, very clear. Yeah, uh, all right, so, um, you have any questions first? No, we do not have any questions, just we, we, we're in committee now. I think, yeah, the, the variance one, the very, very minor, it's just, uh, a technical thing. The second one is also quite technical, is the timing, so. And it goes before, okay. We, we have a motion on the floor, or?
Yes, Chair, perhaps I'll, I'll move forward with it. I think this, um, application is extremely straightforward, and I, I am appreciative of the presentation materials and the presentation, because it clarifies in our minds what we're talking about. Um, and I'm convinced that the, uh, the streets will be conveyed in due course. Uh, I, I don't believe there are
Conditions, right?
Any conditions that I can see.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to move motion to approve without any conditions.
And second, Mr. McKay, second?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, approved with no conditions? Your name is the approved, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So, uh, item twenty-three is fifty-two Riverdale Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a side, west side, two sto- two-story addition. A rear second-story addition above the existing one-story addition. The, a third floor, I'm sorry, a first story, addi- adding an extension for, to a habitable space, and a rear basement walkout also to construct a fun yacht parking pad. We receive a survey site plan for then elevations, and two, uh, three photographs of the trees on the property, cover letter from the agent, and also an arborist report. We receive, uh, comment from, uh, Transportation Engineering, and also from, uh, park, uh, uh, with goes, from manager, street permit parking administration, at from Transportation Services. And we receive a number of opposition, nineteen fifty-four and twenty-eight, and fif- uh, it would be, uh, with also fifty-four Riverdale Avenue. Uh, we, we are ready for the, uh, for the applicant, please.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online, and one online speaker in opposition, and also two speakers in person in opposition here.
Okay.
Sorry, to you, Madam Chair, did you, uh, read the addresses and, uh, opposition that we received correspondence from, the list?
Yes, I, 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 I called the numbers, and also they are all on Riverdale Avenue. I did call, I did call, of the, every address is nineteen fifty-four and twenty-eight.
Great, thank you.
Some of them are
Yes, repeat, yes, thank you.
Shahid, you're unmuted?
Thank you. My name is, again, Shahid Nadavati, and I'm from one-three-zero-four Woodbine Avenue, Unit One. And, uh, yeah, may I present my, the, a small little understanding over here?
Uh, what, 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 a small understanding, sorry?
No, I, I would like to present my.
Oh, yes, because you do have some opposition, there's some, uh, folks like to speak to this application. Uh, please give us a five-minute, uh, presentation. But, uh, do you want to have some material to bring up on the screen before you start?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, the, I was told that, uh, to ask, uh, the staff over there for the extra late folder where I've given, uh, letter over there, because, uh, the, uh, the objection came, uh, very late, the just the day before yesterday. And, uh, I had to immediately submit, yes, that's the one.
Uh, I'm, 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 I'm sorry, I was, uh, is this part of the presentation, or what do you want to tell us on, with this?
Yeah, oh, I'll, I'll do my presentation, and, uh, this letter could be a good, good, uh, representation for you as well.
Okay, so can we start the presentation now, we, we're going to start the clock now, all right?
Yeah, I, I'll go ahead with it now, okay?
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. So, uh, my name is Shahid Nadavati, and I, uh, I, I, I'm representing, uh, fifty-two Riverdale Avenue. Uh, the scope of hearing here is that I would respectfully remind the people in the opposition, or the ones who are objecting, that, uh, respectfully, I would say that the committee's, Committee of Adjustment's role is limited to, uh, reviewing minor variances under the zoning bylaw. Concerns related to structural safety, foundations, or drainage are addressed through the Ontario Building Code during the city's permit and inspection process. Although, I, I, I would, I will definitely touch on those points as well, just a little bit. The structural engineer has confirmed that underpinning is feasible for this addition. If the neighbor has concerns regarding the party wall, we are prepared to use alternative methods such as a bench foundation on our side of the house. So that would bring some kind of an anxiety, a low the anxiety that the neighbor has for safety. The neighborhood character that, uh, the, uh, the objection is for, the proposed addition is entirely at the rear. The front elevation remains unchanged. The overall building height also does not increase by a single inch, it is the same height. One minor variance is requested for the west main wall, but it does not negatively impact the neighbor, this side neighbor. But on the other side, that neighbor is also not impacted, because his wall is even higher than ours. So that is another thing which should not worry even the committee, basically. The tree and the soil, the large front tree at the front, will be fully protected and confirmed by arborist report. Only one small private tree at the rear of the house, which is just fifteen centimeters in diameter, will be removed in accordance with this, uh, urban forestry guidelines, and our arborist is going to take care of that part. The drainage and water flow will be taken care of during the permit time, and no neighboring, the neighbors will be impacted by it. The construction logistics, the neighbor has said, should, nobody should use their property to enter for construction. We will never use their property to enter the construction areas. And the waste bins and the staging will follow the cities, the city's street occupation permits. The construction traffic, as I said, is noted in the arborist report, so that even the trees don't get damaged, and it has been given in a red line over there. That's how the construction traffic is going to happen. The parking on a block from forty-six A to seventy-two Riverdale, every property already has either a front or side parking pad, including the immediate neighbor, who has raised concerns that if at all we put a parking pad, we would create urban heat island effect. But the same neighbor has a parking pad himself. So that's another thing which is, I don't know, why the, why they would, uh, try to prevent us from having a parking bed on the people are having on our stretch of that, uh, side of the road. The survey accuracy, they have brought up another sur- survey accuracy issue. We insist that the survey is accurate. It correctly describes the building as a two-story brick and siding dwelling. Survey describes exterior finishes only, not party wall construction, which the neighbor has said, uh, is trying to, uh, show in that. So primarily, I request the committee to go, to please, uh, look at a case with an understanding that we are only looking for two variances over here. One is, that is, for the main wall height, where the, the allowed height is eight-point-five meters, we are proposing nine-point-four-three meters, which is an axis of less than one meter as such. And this is not giving trouble to anybody. At the same time, fifty-eight and forty, fifty and forty-eight Riverdale have already got those Committee of Adjustment variances. And then, the other one is for FSI. We have, we are allowed point six, we are proposing point seven-seven. This is, this lot is modest, it's not a very big lot. And our family is growing, we just got a kid in the house, and our family is growing. We need some extra space as such. And the neighbors at fifty and forty-eight Riverdale have also been granted this relief. So maybe I respectfully request the committee to look at a case with a very humble eye, thank you. I, I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, do we, uh, so we listen to the opposition, and then we get back, we do have some questions to ask, of course.
Sure.
Yep. All right, good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Yes.
My name is Fred Demirz. Um, I'm a contractor, I own a company called DDB Construction Landscaping, Inc. I've had about thirty years of work on this property.
That was your, give us your address, too, just for our record.
I'm sorry?
Your address.
Oh, uh, fifty-nine-sixty Aquarius Court, Mississauga.
Okay.
L-five-M-four-Z-six.
Okay, thank you, so, yeah, you have five minutes, yes.
Thank you. I heard the, uh, presentation. All due respect to the individual making the presentation, and, uh, I'll always offer that. A couple of things stand out here. First of all, um, I realize that the co- foundation may be something that is reviewed under the building code, but it needs to be stated here that that foundation is random, fieldstone stacked, with a granular mortar. To add any weight to that, an a hundred-and-twenty-year foundation, sounds odd to me, it sounds actually impossible to me. But, and, and, well, whatever else is being done, I understand. However, there's also been an assertion that there was an inspection of this, of this foundation. I'm categorically, categorically seeing that did not take place. There's been no inspection of the foundation on our side or their side that I know of. You can't inspect the foundation from the outside, you have to be actually interior of the building to do that. That was not done. Thirdly, um, there is a, there's a history with this absentee owner that has left the building in disrepair. The front porch is falling apart, the place is completely overrun with, with foliage, as you can see by the pictures there. Uh, and in the back, the back looks like really something out of a, a movie, a horror movie, actually. So, to believe that a, a renovation application would change all this, and the person would all of a sudden be caring for the property is hard to believe. Lastly, I wanted to mention that, um, the actual, like, these are semi-detached dwellings. So, the only thing that I think that this would occur, that, that would happen as a result of this renovation, is that fifty-four's, uh, ability to hang on to its, to its valuation would be diminished severely. Because you're going to have something wi- into the sky above a, a home that is not. And I don't understand why, uh, uh, something would be able to be moving forward, that, that, that would, that would do that categorically. I think that the, the, you know, to, to approve this would, would be, I guess I would say, um, unwise, because I believe that the owners of fifty-four have every right to say that their property would be diminished by this. And it would be, I would advise them to use any platform necessary to ensure that their rights are protected. But, uh, the presentation that was made earlier seems to skim over a lot of things, including the parking pad application. I put the original parking pad in on fifty-four Riverdale. It took me almost a year to get the permit to do it, and we had to change it many times to, to, to comply with the city's wishes. And I was told at that time, and have been told since, that there are no other parking pads available. So how a parking pad will be part of this, I find it difficult to believe. That is my presentation, and I'll accept any questions.
Just a quick one, I, I missed your, uh, address.
Five-nine-six-zero Aquarius Court, Mississauga.
Oh, oh, you're not an immediate neighbor, though, I think.
No, I'm not.
Okay, good, thank you, I wasn't sure I missed, missed.
I'm, I'm related by marriage to the family, so that, I ended up doing a lot of work on the property and know it very, very well. Perhaps better than anyone involved in it.
To the subject property, or to, uh?
The, the, the neighboring property.
Neighboring property, thank you, thank you.
So you're speaking for the, for number fif- uh, fifth-four, right?
I'm speaking for the people on fifty-four, which, by the way, you can see through from fifty-four to fifty-two right now, you can see through the wall.
Oh, all right.
So, you know, the structural integrity be damned, I mean, I, I, it's kind of, it's odd that that would be happening.
Yeah, we will get the applicant to respond to your concerns.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, we're done, we have the next speaker, yeah.
Uh, my name is George Colensis, and I'm the neighbor at fifty-four Riverdale Avenue. I just wanted to point out, um, some of the, uh, errors that, that have been misstated by the.
Yeah, that's what I said, I was, uh, the, the, the secretary have something to say.
Through the chair, so it is five minutes per households, um, to speak.
Right, but we have, we were, we were answering questions as well. So I just wanted to give a quick summation for like thirty seconds to a minute.
Okay, uh, uh, since you're here, so we give you one minute, yeah.
Okay, great.
Please, yeah.
Anyway, the errors and the misstatements, uh, by, um, Norsemen are numerous. Number one, they said they're, they're not going to harm the tree. Well, if the parking pad is put in there, they're not mentioning that the elevation, which you showed in one of your photographs earlier, is two feet higher than the city level. So I don't see how you're not going to be able to put a parking car there. without severing the roots of the tree, which will harm the tree, because if you take everything off one side of the tree and you sever all its roots, it's gonna fall over, eventually it'll, it'll fall over. Secondly, the survey was not done and specified accurately. The walls are not, the walls are not brick. And the most important thing to me is, is why are we putting or allowing a McMansion to be built on a structure that is viewed by the public as one building, but two homes? Why do we want a McMansion, and why are we setting a precedent for the city to start building McMansions in Toronto? Nobody likes McMansions anyway, but why put them on semi-detached homes when they're affecting the property? And we're gonna be stuck for five years, ten years, twenty years, and it may take that long to find out what the extra weight is going to be producing. So we're asking for a geotechnical study and an engineering study to be done prior to any building permits. Two floors and adding two floors is four floors. And that's a McMansion on a very small property, which the previous speaker mentioned. It's a very tiny lot, not to mention that they've broken bylaws for noise and safety issues, and all these things are of concern to all the neighbors. I don't see how they're gonna change their behavior at this point.
That's fine, we heard the concerns.
All right, thank you very much.
Bring it to the table.
Okay, I'm very sorry that I took up extra time.
No, it's fine, now we heard you, that's good, that's important.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you want me to sit back, or do you wanna ask me any questions?
Yeah, you sit back, take a seat there, and then we wait, we only midway through this application.
Peter, you're unmuted.
Yes, I can hear you. I can hear you.
Yes, tell us your name and your address, and yeah, and your concern, please, yeah.
My name is Peter Colensis, I live at fifty-four Riverdale Avenue, the house next door to fifty-two. I'm the owner, and my brother, my brother George Colensi and Fred Demirz spoke eloquently on my behalf. So I just wanna say, I share their concerns about the extra load on the house. The wall between the two houses is wood, not concrete, and I worry about the long-term property value about having two houses next to each other that are asymmetrical in shape and design. That's my concern. Thank you.
We, we, yeah, we got his points, yeah, thank you.
That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think that if they're all, if, if also, another one come from thirty-four, I think they consumed their five minutes, used up very well, very well.
No, that's everything, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, any other speakers? All right.
No other speakers.
Okay, now we can bring back the agent. I, I hope you have heard all the concerns, and then maybe you can address some of them, please, yeah, or all of them.
Hi, thank you for unmuting. Yeah, I'll address all the concerns that they've noted, I'll try my best. So first of all, we need to note that there was a fire at this house, and the house had to be vacated. The whole house had to be gutted. Nobody lives over there, and the city had termed this house as unusable. At the same time, dangerous to even be entering that house. So that house went into disarray, and that was one of the reasons why it was not maintained. The owner is a doctor, and his wife is also medical, works in the medical field. These are very, very efficient people, and they are very capable of managing and working on their properties, and they are going to use this as their primary residence. Currently, they're living away in a rented place. So they are going to come back and have this as a primary residence. So I assure the neighbors, this is not going to be an issue anymore. Now, the other one is that this is not a mansion, we are not even increasing the height. We are just doing internal, we are adding room only inside. In the attic area, there is some space available because the attic is very high. So we are using that attic area, look into the plans, and you'll see. The plans are available on the portal, and they can look into the plans and see that we are hardly extending anything over there. We are not even reducing the green space, which I am always against reducing. So primarily, we are not having any of the neighbors or having any issues created for them. The party wall, which concern the neighbors have, is definitely a concern for us as well because that party wall is a very flimsy wall. That needs to be made into a fire-grade, demising wall, and the city has very strict bylaws for it. The Ontario Building Code has very strict bylaws for fire rating. It goes through the fire marshal as well, and it will be taken care of. As far as the spotting is concerned, the foundation is concerned, we will be taking care of the foundation. We have a structural engineer who's licensed, and the city is going to supervise everything, and the plans and the structural plans will be passed by the city as per, and they are very strict with structural plans as well. And there will not be anything left out because it's also going to be the safety for my client as well. So with that, I request the committee to understand our situation as well, that we've gone through a lot over here, and somehow, there seems to be an animosity between the two neighbors. But as an agent, I request both the neighbor as well as the committee to be very kind to this particular proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We do, we have questions to this applicant, we do have questions, I wait for my turn. Go ahead, please.
Just a quick one, just another body, I take it that you are aware of the transportation staff report with regard to the front yard parking?
Bring that up, because that's my question exactly, too, yeah.
Yes, we will, we will, we will follow all the recommendations that they've given.
Okay, great, thank you, that's, that's just the one piece that I wanted to be sure that you are aware of that.
Through the chair to the agent, so then are you amending the purpose of the application to remove the front yard parking pad?
Sorry, come again?
So to the agent, through the chair, will you be amending the purpose of the application to remove the reference to the construction of the front yard parking pad?
No, the thing is that the Arborist has told us that he will manage that tree and not have any issues for the, that is for the urban forestry. You will see to it that the urban forestry guidelines will be followed, and that that particular parking lot will not harm the tree.
Sir, we're speaking about transportation services.
I do not think you understand the question. The question is that transportation is telling you, or telling us that the front yard parking is not permitted, and it's advise us to remove the purpose of your application that includes the front yard parking. Do you agree on removing that on the purpose clause, in the front part of your application? The purpose of your.
No, the thing is that the only other alternative I have is to say yes now, and then reapply to the transportation department to allow that particular parking.
Yeah, you can work with transportation later, yeah, but at this moment, we do not include the front yard parking pad.
Okay, I agree to that.
Remove that, yeah, all right. That's one, that's my question, the, any other?
That was my question.
Yes, so we do not have any question now in committee. Before that, I'd just like to make a couple comments about construction and some oppositions asking for geotechnical reports or engineering report. I'd just like to mention that that is part of the construction process. They still have to apply for permission to build, okay? And that is going to go through a technical OBC review and also a zoning review where they are ready to apply. And those are going through building officials to make sure that they meet all the requirements. If the building department asks for geotechnical report or any kind of report or studies, they can, not us. This committee is looking at the application with two variances. And that's why I told you, it's not that those issues are not being addressed, but it's being addressed in a very different way. And during that time, if you see something happen, whatever, call three-one-one, and they will connect you with the appropriate inspector or building, Toronto building. They, then they will, they will, they will take care of your concern. Okay, now we're in committee.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair, for, if I may just take the lead on this one. Thank you for noting that when it comes to the building issues, it's not within our purview. What we're looking at are those two variances that we have before us. And neither of the two variances are major issues. I think both of them are minor. I suspect that in the longer term, the new construction will actually add value to both structures, structurally as well as monetarily, which is neither here nor there. So I do not see a problem with this now amended application. I think both of the variances.
Through the chair, one moment, we're just trying to get.
Sometimes, actually, my web has stopped, stopped working a few minutes ago, or a half an hour ago. It just disappeared. I'm not connected with the web apps. And I suddenly, I do not know why. I didn't want to interrupt the.
Through the chair, we'll just wait one moment, so we can have the chair's video back up.
Did yours, did it happen to your, your web apps? You guys have?
No, not the web apps, no.
This is my, connection, I mean, the internet connection, this, it threw me out. It's not working. It's still waiting.
Would it help to reboot? Is it your internet or your web app?
It's, it's internet, that is the, also, yeah, the web apps also is not working.
Do you want to go to email?
The, it's the internet shows that I'm, I'm connected.
Yes, it's.
Connected, but the web app is not working, right?
Could you please go to your email and then?
Or go, go from the email, okay. Okay. It's, it, the, you, you, I, you see, I had the email before, now it doesn't, it's gone. It's blank screen. The browser is gone, the, no, you see, there's no, it should be on. Yeah, see?
A bright side is technically.
It's way beyond technical.
Compresses.
Yes, we have gas. Now, are we back on now?
And email?
Okay, okay. You go. Okay, next one. Add one to two hundred, I think. Oh, sorry. You got a tag. Two hundred, at the end. Maybe just a little bit sometime. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Someone, someone, okay, Mr. Byatt, remind us where we are at, please.
Do you want me to rewind?
No, I, I, I think you are the ones who was.
Yeah.
When you were speaking, yeah.
So perhaps I'll, I'll just backtrack and begin from the beginning, if I may. As I said, the application before us, and what I'm reminded of is that in your opening remarks, we're always reminded that we are here to deal with the matter before us. And the matter before us as committee members are the two variances, the request that's in front of us. So anything related to structure, you know, engineering, construction, is not within our purview. What I find here in front of us are the two variances, both of which I think are quite acceptable. I think they've been very cautious about the issues of height, for example, length, et cetera. So I find both of these variants requests quite acceptable, and ones that are supportable from my point of view.
Okay, yeah. Oh, I also want to add another comment. I remember the applicant saying something like the building department will supervise the construction. I want to correct that word. They don't supervise any construction, they're the authority, authority of jurisdiction. They are the approve of only the OBC and the building standards and then all that. They do not supervise the work. That's why I want to correct, so that it's not a misunderstanding there. Okay.
I would just add, I agree with both of your comments and to hear your analysis of the variances. I, I think the other good things about this proposal is the front remains unchanged. It's not gonna look different from the street in terms of structural, I'm assuming it'll be painted or something. And the new additions to this house are largely within the existing footprint, so I think it's been sensitively designed.
Okay, so, any other comments, and we do, we have a motion?
So if my colleagues say, okay, I'll move a motion to approve this amended application because we've got the purpose that's been amended.
Yes.
And I don't know if we need to add transportation condition at this point.
Through the chair, no, if the agent has removed the front yard parking pad, then the transportation condition would be mute. If they didn't, then I would recommend that you impose that condition. But in this case, the agent has removed the front yard parking pad.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Reed, second, and all in favor with amended agenda? Okay, all in favor, approve unanimously with the amended agenda. Okay, the next item is, number twenty-four is nine Vividale Avenue. This is to construct a new two-story semi-detached ossicular building with a parcel, partially cantilever second story and rear Juliet balcony. This ossicular building, abutting the laneway, will contain a one-car garage on the ground floor and storage and loft space. There's no habitable space on the second level. And we receive a copy of site plan for plan elevation, six photographs of the property cover letter and presentation material from the agent. We receive comments from community planning and also from urban forestry. We receive fourteen signature petition in support of all the occupants from, of Botview Avenue and also Vividale Avenue. We receive opposition, two opposition letters from nineteen Vividale Avenue. And that's all we have received, and we are ready for the application, applicant.
Through you, Madam Chair, sorry, through you, Madam Chair. We can also hear this in tandem with item twenty-seven, which is eleven Riverdale Avenue, it's the same agent.
Yeah, and it's attached to this one, too, right?
Yes, and we do have a few registered speakers for this item.
Okay, so I read the, also, item twenty-seven is eleven Vividale Avenue. This is also constructing a new two-story semi-detached ossicular building with a complete cantilever second story and front and rear Juliet balconies. The ossicular building, abutting the laneway, The ancillary building, abutting the laneway, will contain one-car garage on the ground floor and storage loft space on the second floor. We also receive, um, site, survey site plan, elevation photograph, five photographs and a cover letter from the agent and also presentation material from the agent. We receive material, comment from urban forestry and community planning. We have, uh, received this, one is twelve signature petition in support from, uh, Riverdale, uh, from Broadview and Riverdale Avenue. We also receive a, a position letter from nineteen Riverdale. Yes, uh, we can hear this both item in, at the same time. Thank you, we're ready for the agent.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent in person here and two registered speakers in support that are in attendance. And we also, we have one speaker at eleven River Avenue, but after multiple attempts, I was unable to reach her.
Yeah, okay, so we have some here, somewhere, and some online. Okay, so you do have a few folks like to speak to this application, so. Anyway, tell us, give us your name and your, and your address and then we can start from there.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Greg Dividovich. My address is one zero one Robert Hicks Drive. Uh, I'm the agent on behalf of both applications of nine and eleven Riverdale. Um, I did share a present.
Do you want to bring some material up before you start?
Yes, uh, yeah, you can go to the next one. Um, I, I do have a brief presentation to summarize the proposal. The proposal is, uh, both homeowners are, uh, planning to construct two ancillary structures on each of their lots. The ancillary building's intended purpose is garage and storage. Uh, they've signed declaration of uses, uh, speaking to that, it is strictly for, uh, storage use. The home's back onto a private laneway. And the laneway does now consist of a mix of laneway houses and two-story ancillary structures. I did want to clarify the heights as well because I did talk to planning. Um, so the, the elevation of the, of the backyard slopes a little bit. So the height of the structure is a little bit deceiving. It actually is smaller in, in, in an area. Uh, we have to take the, the highest, the tallest point from grade, established grade to the height. So I did want to point out both at eleven nine Riverdale, that the height is not technically six. It's five point, uh, five point six one for eleven, nine. And if you go to the next one, it's, um, it's smaller as well. I did attach, you can go to the, to the next one. Um, there is plenty of precedent in both the area and in Toronto for a number of stories of ancillary buildings, uh, heights and lot coverage. We are requesting, uh, the lot coverage is obviously expanding for, for both. The crux of the matter is, I, I can go into detail of each of those, uh, precedents. However, I, I've shared the material with council, so I, I won't read it out loud. I also can't see it up there. If you can go to the next one. The rear yard landscaping for eleven Riverdale, I also wanted to illustrate that the true space in the rear yard of eleven, or nine Riverdale, removing the ancillary structure is fifty-eight square meters. And they do have thirty percent actually of that fifty-eight remaining square meters would be soft landscaping. The water runoff, we plan on mitigating it because the two-story garage, we do plan on having a rain barrel, a harvest. So the downspouts are going to be connected to a rain barrel. So there's not going to really be any water runoff to the city. The laneway is now a private laneway, it's not paved, um, it's granular. That laneway and area is not taken into consideration of the rear yard. However, that is also part of the absorption of, of, of water runoff. In speaking with, okay, go to the next slide. In speaking with planning, um, essentially, this ancillary building would have support if planning, of planning, if its intended use was habitable. The problem, however, for this location is that due to its, uh, limited size and access, it does not comply as a garden suite. It never will because EMS cannot access the rear. So that is why the proposal is simply for storage and garage space. So I, I did want to highlight that because that is essentially the crux of the matter, that if it was intended for habitable use, planning would essentially support it. However, its intended use for boxes is not technically, uh, part of their support. I also talked to urban forestry as well. Uh, we intend to comply with the conditions. Urban forestry, urban forestry triggered, it was triggered by the honey locust tree on nine Riverdale and the canopy overhanging, um, eleven Riverdale is, is, is what triggered it. We do not intend to remove that tree. That tree is meant to be kept. I spoke to urban forestry. Like I said, we intend to apply for a permit, arborist report and intend to preserve that tree on the property. And I, that's, that's all, that's all I have. I'm here to, I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have. Both homeowners are also here to speak on behalf of their application and, and the intended use and, and why we believe it's important for them.
Thank you. Uh, since you have some oppositions, we will maybe hold our question to you until we hear them.
Yeah, no problem.
Let's have the next.
Through the chair, I'm not sure if we do have opposition. It looks like it, it might be just the homeowners that are registered in support.
Yes.
Okay, so we do not need, yeah, you're always speaking on behalf anyway.
Right, so I'll just do one check of the rooms. There's nobody here in opposition to these items, correct? Okay, so it's just the homeowners.
The homeowners are presenting, yeah, nine Riverdale, Matthew will be speaking this, yeah.
Yes, we do have, I do have some questions at this stage there. Can the staff bring up the photograph of item twenty seven? Say photos, E one. I just want to ask a question. On the left side, the photograph, the, yeah, that one, that, that, with the three photographs, on the left side, what are we looking at? What is that? It looks like some kind of two-story structure of some kind, in some kind of backyard. I, I just want to know, are you trying to show us some? Is that the garage you're talking about?
No, 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 that's current construction of a home.
Of what?
Of my home.
Of the home, yeah, of the home. That's current construction of the home.
Okay, so.
That's not the garage, yeah.
This is to show us.
It's existing, uh, are you looking at that white?
Yeah, that one. I just want to know what, what, why it's there and what are you trying to express on, and that's so that we can get information.
All, all we were trying, we had to provide photos to, uh, to the planning technician to provide photos of the rear yard, that's all.
Oh, okay.
It's not, no, yeah, that's not.
Okay, oh, okay, understood. All right, all right.
Yeah.
So, but on the right-hand side, that little shed is the existing garage?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, so I'll, I'll pass it to, any, any other questions for me?
Uh, that's where we, I don't know, no, I've asked my question.
Sure.
Uh, do you, I, I, I do like, like to ask a question. Usually for the garage, you have, uh, I mean, the permit height is only four meter, four point one meter. And you're asking for like a six point one, it's two-story. Why do you need the, the extra storage and what is it?
About to address some of that.
Oh, you're going to answer the question, okay.
So through the chair, the speaker now is the homeowner slash agent for the property at eleven Riverdale.
Actually nine.
Oh, at nine, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, owner of nine. Okay, great. Oh, there it goes. I will refer to, um, sort of the, the satellite image shortly. Good, oh, you need my name. I'm Matthew Cole, owner of nine Riverdale Avenue.
Okay, yeah.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members. Then, okay, so, the main reason for my application before you is nine centimeters. Unfortunately, that is how much the walkway between our house and the neighbors at number seven comes short of the minimum EMS access measurement of one hundred centimeters. There's a new sprinkler aspect, but we still come a bit short because it tapers. So all, basically, I'll continue, sorry. Uh, we're a family of four, in comfortable but not expensive three-bedroom house. Only one of those rooms has a closet. Our longstanding plan has been to support my father-in-law, now ninety-four years old, in a multi-generational household. And with that in mind, we actively pursued laneway suites back in twenty eighteen, uh, when it was sort of just coming out of test, as they expanded from the test zone. But our lane isn't a lane, it's a private right-of-way, that was, that was news to me. Then garden suites came along in twenty twenty-two, very excited about that, new opportunity. That's when I learned about the EMS aspect. So over years and I, like, I've corresponded with planning, like, pursuing them, saying, win, win, win. So very excited about this. So unfortunately, those were, ended up being dead ends. So the map, one, and this addresses one of the concerns as well against the proposal, is there, on the map there, you can, that's a view of the lane. The sort of the greenish lime-green line is more or less the, I'll call it the roadway. It's dirt. Uh, it is, I mean, not a pretty soft surface, but it's soft surface. The green dots are the houses that back on to or are sort of in the near vicinity of it that don't have EMS concern. There are some trees, but they're wide a lot, so they could, as of right, move on a garden suite. There's a concern about a precedence of second stories in the area. Those green dots, they don't need a precedence. They can just proceed. So that's something of note. Uh, the red box is us on the north side there. And then on the lower left is a blue-ish box. That's an existing coach house, two stories, similar height to what we're going with. It did have horses and a coach person living in it years gone by, so it's, it's been around. It was definitely grandfathered. So that's, that's something there. So the precedent thing of height, it doesn't really apply. So going back to the theme of space, so with these great options closed to us, we underpin our basement, uh, our neighbor, we, very cooperatively, did this, we both did that, moved forward with underpinning the basement, lowered the height to allow for a bedroom, small living space, a bath shower to support my father-in-law, and he resides there now. Uh, he enjoys it all and given the fifteen-year gap between him and my mom, he will likely not be the last grandparent there before the kids move us downstairs one day. And they have said that. Of note, this project took our rough storage space. And that's where we're seeking to replace with the second floor of the proposed garage. Mezzanine is some storage and planning said, how about a mezzanine? It's true, it's some storage. A floor is more, and that's all we're trying to do. Not be habitable space by our interest or by bylaws. We have made signed statements to that effect. There is one, there is a household, two, two individuals who I quite like in opposition. Also primarily environmental concerns. Avian well-being being one of them, it's true, it's beautiful. Honey locust remains. We have a climbing hydrangea, the length of our fence, both our neighbor eleven and ourselves, it occupies a meter of our backyard, front to back. That, just this morning, seeing lots of little birds moving in and out of. There's no denying a second story is a new obstacle. Uh, we do intend to put dots in the windows, that's what's going to happen regardless. So, but there's also lots of flyway remaining. On the proposal, there is a removal of a tree at number nine. That is a small Japanese maple in our yard. It is so small that it is not in the protected nature of trees. That being said, we put it down for transparency as a removal. We hope to prune one branch which will impact the front of the new building. Love the tree, don't want to lose it. The tree out front of our house, story and a half, we planted it, wasn't there. We moved in, we put it in, it's great eastern red bud. Concerns about the sewer system and water and drainage. No water ever from that laneway hits the sewer system. It's, it's a rough road, drains in, in winter it ponds a bit because the ground's frozen, happens everywhere in North America that has freezing. One last comment, ooh, as the clock ticks down. Just note in the, in the plan, official plan, one of those, one of the things I read and liked was recognizing the critical importance of housing accessibility and affordability. We're trying to achieve some of that. Also, neighbors are not static and will evolve through time to renovations, additions and in-hole housing activity.
Your, your five minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Any question to this speaker? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ellen Balter, eleven Riverdale Avenue.
Oh, okay, so through the chair, so it's five minutes per household? So we've already heard from nine and eleven, right?
Just nine.
Right, but we don't have homeowners speaking separately. If you're the agent, then you're speaking on behalf of both. So we've technically now allotted additional times.
I'd like to speak to item twenty seven, though.
So if you want to add something quickly since you're here.
It's a separate agenda item, it's item twenty seven. We've agreed to hear them together.
Sorry, let me, let me speak. Uh, because we already asked the first speaker, who is the agent for both property, for both applications? So he has used up his time for both items.
I'm sorry, who did?
Yes, the, uh, the agent. He told us that he's representing both property, both applications, number twenty-five and also twenty-seven.
Yes, twenty-four and twenty-seven?
Twenty-four and twenty-seven, yeah. So it's already, your five minutes has already been used up.
I'm on a separate agenda item. We agreed to put these together because they have very much overlap. But I'm, I, I'm a separate homeowner under item twenty seven.
I thought that you, you're in agreement before you came here.
But your agent that signed the application form is you, correct? Right? Okay, so you've, you're representing both properties. So you've already spoke, but ma'am, if you're here, we can hear from you quickly. But it's just, again, you already had an agent speak, um, on, on your behalf. Okay.
I'm four minutes, twenty seconds, I've timed it twice.
No, uh, it's fine, so we, we give you a few minutes. Since you're here, just, yeah, tell us what you, what, what.
Thank you very much.
Us to hear.
Sorry, I.
Yeah.
Eleven, eleven Riverdale Avenue? Ellen Balter, homeowner. Let me go? Okay. I've seen the Riverdale Avenue neighborhood evolve over the past quarter century since I purchased my home at eleven Riverdale Avenue. When I bought and moved in in nineteen ninety-eight, it was just me and my two-year-old daughter. She and another little boy her age were the only kids on our area of the street. It was largely empty nesters otherwise. It fit the two of us comfortably. It also had a six-foot ceiling basement, uh, more than a crawl space, but not for living quarters. It became a useful storage area for camping gear, for hobbies, camera equipment. I even had a little darkroom down there, boxes of toys outgrown, waiting to be donated, you get the picture. You'll note from the drawings, though, that my home, eleven Riverdale Avenue, is the only house on that entire stretch that still maintains its original building envelope. All others have had additions built onto them and extensions to those additions. Garages have been built and rebuilt larger, sometimes even fifty percent larger, such as the folks at nineteen Riverdale, the sole opponents to this application. They, by the way, also renovated their home before moving in a couple of years ago, adding not just fifty percent more garage, but also completely renovating and adding a deck onto the back of the home. I'm lucky to enjoy a backyard and that won't change. Fourteen immediate neighbors support this application. But my now adult daughter and her partner are returning to Toronto and will be moving in with me. That's why this application is being made. Three people with three very different lives, and I'm sure you'll agree, will be challenging for family harmony unless we somehow expand our living space. So we looked into laneway suites, no dice, it's already been discussed. The entrance to our unassumed lane is too narrow for EMS vehicles. And so the plan to return to Toronto was put on hold. Then garden suites became possible. We jumped for joy, perfect. Nope, again. So if you look at the filing materials that Matthew put up previously, thirteen houses on that image, on our little private easement-based private laneway, on either side of us and within the garden suite bylaw, they can immediately build a garden suite, two stories and high, and live in there. They do not have to come before this committee. But not me and not nine Riverdale Avenue, my neighbor. The space between my home and thirteen Riverdale is nine centimeters shy of the permitted access from the street. So I undertook the process of keeping the envelope the same and excavating and underpinning together with my party wall neighbor here today. It is now a nine-foot ceiling and we have here neighbors working very well together. The nine-foot ceiling solves the living space problem sufficiently, but storage requirements of three very different lives simply do not fit, which is why both nine and eleven are seeking to build storage space. It's for hobbies and storage. It's not for living quarters and I've provided my undertaking that this is so. As a lawyer, my word is bond. We are not asking for more than what these thirteen neighbors can do as of right. We're just solutioning it differently. More expensively, frankly, that excavation and underpinning was a hundred grand, now the cost of this ancillary building, but it's what makes sense for us, for the street and for the city's bylaws. I've seen this neighborhood evolve and it is a joy to see many families moving back into the area and much renovation and improvement continues on Riverdale. and much renovation and improvement continues on Riverdale. Densification is the only way forward, and while the laneway and garden suites go a great distance to help with that, where it doesn't suit, such as this case, due to three and a half inches, I ask that this committee grant the exception, so that we can move forward with living in and evolving with the city, while remaining within the spirit and intent of city bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any question? I, I actually do have a question, just to tell me the history of it. You said that you have tried to apply for a garden suite or a laneway suite before. Did you actually submit an application on that?
We did not, because we don't comply, and we understood from inquiries, and my neighbor has been the spearheading those inquiries, that it is binary. There is no, there's no committee of adjustment that will override EMS requirements. So, there is, there's just insufficient access between the houses for emergency services to get to the, to the rear.
Those are the technical requirement, I see. All right, thank you. I just want to know why, why.
Oh, that would've been definitely the preference. This is not fun for any of us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, that's all the speakers? No, no more from, from the same address? All right, so can we bring back the agent? Yeah, please. Do we have questions for the agent? I do have questions. We have received a community planning, the report, recommend us to refuse both applications, because it does comply with, for garage or a serial building, existing most of the variants, as, variances. So, what, what, how do you respond to that?
So, my response to that was precedent in, in two-story ancillary buildings, higher actually than the one that we're proposing.
In your neighborhood?
In, in, in the neighborhood, that were, again, intended uses for garden suites, except this, there, there, there's precedent for that height, that density, that lot coverage in the neighborhood. It's just because the use was habitable, it was approved in this case, because it's not habitable, not because, can't be habitable, because it doesn't comply with technical access for being habitable, so.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes.
If I can just ask a question, following up from.
Sure.
That previous question. Have you actually had conversations with planning?
Yes, I talked to Cameron multiple times.
Did they give you any indication of any way in which this may be mitigated? Because they're basically saying refuse. They're putting us in a tight spot, and you in a tight spot, so I'm just wondering.
Yeah, we can, the staff, they bring up their, their report on the, on the screen, so that, yeah, it's quite, they're both for both, for, yeah, just one of them is the same.
The, yeah, the one, the, when I talked to Cameron, the one mitigating option that was offered was a mezzanine, because if you cover forty percent of the lot, forty percent of the upper floor, it technically wouldn't count, count as a story, even though the height of the building would be the same. The problem is that forty percent doesn't really offer storage for a multi-generational home, which now has tenants in, in the basement that require storage. That's the issue. So, the mitig, then, that was discussed with Cameron, was a mezzanine, which would cover only forty percent of the second floor. However, the height of the building would be the same, it's just through technicalities of the building code, it's not count as, as a story as part of an application, so.
So, if I understand you correctly, there is a possible mitigation, but not quite acceptable.
It's a, yeah, it's, it's not, it's, it wouldn't be, it would be a, a very constraining.
They, they seem to be differ from, from your, on also the coverage of the serial building, which is your, the, the area, the coverage is ten percent, but you're, you're almost double that, eighteen point nine, and also the, the floor area, you, you definitely double that, more than double. So, what's, what, why has to be that size? Why cannot be more like a give and take in, in between? So that the planning will give you some kind of support.
Right. There is precedent, I, I did supply precedent for one in thirty-seven Boston, twenty-five-year-old gray, and I believe nine Dawson in the area that has the same lot coverage. The challenge with lot coverage is that these lots are very narrow and they're very small, and the moment you try to expand on them, nothing really complies with lot coverage because of the, strictly the sizes of the lot. So, the moment you try to construct anything that's feasible for modern vehicles and storage, it, it would trigger a lot coverage variance.
Okay, by, by, almost double?
Yeah, it, it is worth mentioning that the private lane right-of-way is not included as part of lot coverage, but technically, it's, it's, it is there, and it is not being covered. But that lane, private laneway is not included as part of the area.
Any other question? Okay, we do not have any more questions, so we are in committee.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so, you want to start? I, I, I like, that just expressed, this is a really tough case.
I was just very greedy. I wasn't quite sure about the finding report, in a sense of, did it just relate to eleven Riverdale, or is it also nine?
Both, both.
Four, three.
Both, yes. And also, they, they are posing, they, they, they're concerned with the, of variants like in coverage and height and number of story. For a serial building is supposed to be one story, and then now it's two, yeah. The height and also the floor area, so it's almost everything.
Everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I really sympathize with both these homeowners, and I think they've, they were clear in that they, they're trying to just get more space, right? On their, on their lots, and they've done it in a way, they're proposing to do it in a way that is kind of the last gasp. And looking at, I mean, the, my, my main, my first concern, I wasn't so concerned about the two, two stories. Just given, I think they've done a very good job of showing the emerging context of this area, that two-story ancillary buildings are permitted in most of their private laneway, and that will come, and that will change the character of the neighborhood. And, like, the footprint of the actual garage sounds big, but then looking at the drawing, it's, you know, there's the parking space, and then the staircase up, and there's not that much extra room. I don't think, I think they're just narrow lots and, and small lots. Again, and then, like, the city planning's kind of proposal to just do a mezzanine, like, I, I don't really see a benefit to that, and that the structure is still the same size, with just, with limited benefit to it. I think the fact that they're willing to, that they're making this declaration of use to kind of support what they're proposing to do, that goes a long way for me as well. And, I mean, it's rare that I go against community planning's refusal request, but I, I do think in this case, it's a bit heavy-handed, and I think that they, these applications represent, you know, I, I think a, a good-hearted kind of approach to this, so I'll be supporting them both.
Yeah, I, I, I can see how they, they have make another approach, but I, I just, my difficulty is this, since they have investigated the possibility of putting a garden suite or a laneway suite, which they say because of the distance from, or the access width and all that. And then instead, they, they come and put, apply for a larger, right, or serial building. And if it's only just for use to, storage, I would almost try to say that they do not find any other zoning bylaw that will allow them to expand other way, but this is one way that they find that they might be able to do it. But that, that's some kind of difficult, if it's a garden suite, we will look at it as a garden suite or, or with a, of a laneway suite, right? So, but then we, we can't, we look at it like a, just oversized storage above the parking. I'm not, I, I see why planning recommend refusal, because it doesn't seem to be what it, the function of the building really is doing. It's just to have a lot more storage, rather than they have some intended purpose afterwards. But I, I, I only make the, it's very tough, I, I think that is, the intention is good.
If I might put in my two cents worth, I think when I first saw the, the first application, number nine, Riverdale, every one of the variances, of course, was excessive.
Yeah.
They're all large. It's not, you know, ten percent more, fifteen percent, but they, some of them are a hundred percent more. And I think I always have a problem with, if it's one or two, you know, one can look at it and try and see, see it in context. I think I have difficulty, we've got five variances for number nine, and every one of them are not minor. None of them are minor. And like Mr. Reed, I, I, I empathize with, with the residents, the owners, not being able to put up a different structure garden suite or laneway suite. By the same token, planning has presented us with a finding. And I generally look to planning for advice and direction. It would be nice, on the one hand, to make an exception, and say, yeah, you know, these are exceptions, but the next exceptions become the rule, and I think that becomes a problem. So, I'm having a lot of difficulty, I think, as are all of us, in terms of both of these applications. And that's why I was wondering, and I asked the agent, you know, conversations with planning, are there other possible solutions?
Yeah, and, and, and on top of that, when we do not find a specific set of bylaws that allow them to do garden suite or certain other additions, so I, I go back to reading the intent of the official plan, or the zoning bylaw, that the intention of a serial building is not for you to have also oversized storage space. I, I think that is contradictory to the intent of the zoning bylaw. And then I do not think it's minor in that, in that context.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm torn about it. I'd like to, I'd like to be able to give the variance, but, you know, we've got a land use planning report that's quite strong, saying, you know, the intent, the title of both the OP and zoning not met.
For my throat, something out here. We've got before us either refusal, possibly approving. Or the third option is perhaps to go back to the agent and the owners and ask them to look for a deferral, to see if they can find a different solution. Because they know what this.
I like that.
If they want, what do you think? Peter, what do you think, if we ask them to defer this, and then maybe work with community planning more? I don't, I just don't want to, to, yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, I'm, sure, if they, it, it sounds like they're not gonna get an approval just by what we're hearing up here, but, yeah, I would support a deferral. I just don't know, through their conversations, how much room there is to, to change, both from planning's perspective and from their, the applicant's perspectives.
So, we can ask their opinion, maybe they have already discussed this. Enough, with, with the parent, they have a feeling whether they will support.
We don't know if they've consulted, like, we don't know if they've consulted a land use planner, might be able to advocate, you know, a position for the, you know, in opposition to the city view.
Okay, let's get out of the committee and ask this question, whether they, they, they will take on our suggestion. Okay, you heard us, eh? We've, we've. Yeah, we're in discussions whether the case that we, we have recommendation from planning to refuse both cases, and then we feel that there may be, there's still some merits on the application, and we give you a chance, whether you will take on is to defer this case, the both applications, so we can go back to community planning and convince them that, or work with them, maybe come up with a, 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 easy, a, 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 maybe compromise plan. What do you think? Or you want to ask to make a decision today? It's two choices.
Right, so, I've talked to Cameron, she's escalated to her manager. I, I've put together precedent. She, ultimately, if we were here representing a garden suite, planning would not have an issue. If, if, if the upstairs, if the second, if the second floor was for people, there would be precedent, and planning would not have an opposition. Because it's for boxes, they have an opposition. That's, that's the, that's essentially the, the matter at hand, is, is if it was people, planning would not oppose.
Exactly, because, yeah, the set of bylaw is to increase at the garden, sorry. Yeah, the garden suite is got its purpose for the, for that set of bylaw. And for, for, for the set of bylaw, governing, just a serial building is not to allow you to build a big box, right?
I understand, and the reason for this is because the basements are being given up for, for multi-generational homes, for parents to move in, for children to move in, that's, that, that's what's happening. So, there is no access to storage anymore with the densification of homes, so that's, that's.
We heard that, so what do you think? Do you want to, us to defer this case, or you want us to make a decision?
Well, it sounds, I mean, it sounds by through, can we, can I consult with the homeowners? Can you give me?
Okay, maybe you can get back, come back to us, we, we're going to.
Wait, well, can I ask, are, are the comments that I made about it being for habitable use versus storage, does that impact? Does that influence your decision, is it all, or?
Remember, it's planning that has indicated refusal.
I understand, I, there's also, there is also precedent with, with making decisions that are, are not in alignment with, with planning in the city of Toronto as well, but.
On the other hand, you can always appeal our decision anyway.
I, I understand, yeah, I understand. Okay, can you give me a minute?
Okay, oh, we can wait, one minute?
One minute.
Okay, one minute.
One minute's fair, yeah.
Iceberg house, let them build down a couple of stories? What do you think, Peter?
Not so scary.
Have you got a couple of levels underground?
That was a minute, I promised. I, I, we can, I can solve the homework, so, we, the, the reality is, I've done all the due diligence with planning that I, that I could, so we, we truly do want you guys to look at the matter at hand in terms of, holistically speaking, that the, the, that the project is strictly for storage spaces, and it is required, it is, it is needed, so we do ask that you guys go to committee and consider it, and. Yes.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you. We've exhausted all options.
No, understood, but I mean, the fact that if, if the space were a few inches wider between the houses, right, that they would be permitted to build a laneway suite. So, it's a similar structure, they've gone down, like, they have intensified their sites, right? And that's, that's one of the main goals of laneway suites, right? So, I just see this as getting, like, a back, a workaround to get to the same end. You have intensified the site, and then you're moving your storage to the back.
Oh, I see, yeah.
You know, and I think, I don't, I think they've done a good job of explaining that, how these are multi-generational homes, but just vertically rather than horizontally.
I see, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, because they utilize the basement for, for.
People instead of storage.
Living space, and then, 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 then they don't have the basement for all their storage.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we have a planning report that essentially says, you know, it, it fails really all of the tests, essentially what they're saying. So, we're kind of stuck.
No, we can make a decision on this, we have to make a decision on it, so.
Well, we, we did earlier today, right? Earlier today, we went against the community planning report.
Exactly, yeah. So, it sounds like we, we do have a motion on, on the floor. Exactly, yeah. So it sounds like we, we do have a motion on, on the floor, like-
By who?
No?
No.
Oh, no?
Peter was talking about it.
No, no, yeah, I, I was just saying, um, yeah-
Sounds like, I said, I did not-
Sounds like, yeah, no, it sounds like there's agreement on, on it, but not from me. So one of you guys can go ahead.
Oh, yes, one of you guys.
Let me move this along. Um, so let me put forward a motion and, uh, explain why I'm making this motion. I think part of the, uh, the reason I'd like, like to move the motion to not approve, to refuse this application, is that first of all, planning has given us a direction.
Mm-hmm.
The other is that unfortunately, when I look at all the variances, as I mentioned earlier, they're all excessive. Uh, and that for me is very problematic, because, uh, we make an exception today with this particular application, and you can bet your life that that becomes a precedent for, for subsequent applications. I do believe that there must be a different way, because every problem has a solution.
Mm-hmm.
And I am certain that this one has one as well. That's why I suggested a deferral, so you can go back to the drawing board and think differently.
Mm-hmm.
If you're thinking along the same lines, you come up with the same answer.
Mm-hmm.
So for that reas- for those reasons, I'd like to move a motion to refuse the applications, both of them.
Okay, and is that, Mr. McKay, second? Okay. I just let me, for both adv- application, right? Okay, um, all in favor? Uh, I abstain. That's, you know, avoid a, a tie vote, okay? There's two, one, and the chair abstain. And it's been refused. And I remind you that you can always appeal our decision, yes, for both application. Okay, so we go back to number twenty-five, right? Number twen- item twenty-five is, is it been diff- oh, no, it's not different. Number twenty-five is four, five, three, Edlington Avenue West. This is the auto existing two-story mixed-use building by converting a portion of the basement level storage space into two hotel units by the ground level garage into one hotel unit and adding six hotel units to the second level. Also, the remaining storage space or boiler room, uh, with a walk-in freezer within the basement level, as well as the existing non-residential uses, uh, which is a storage and, I mean, a restaurant and a clothing store on the ground floor and will be maintained and, and altered. So we have received a survey site plan for plan elevations, uh, revised, uh, site plan and nine photographs and cover letter and, did, did we do this? I, it seems-
We didn't defer.
We didn't defer it, right? And, and a deferral, oh, yes, sorry. No wonder why I thought that, I mean, deja vu, I have read this before. I, I, I defer request from the agent and the email corresponding with the agent and the staff report from, uh, Metrolink. Hmm. All right, so we are ready if you get the agent this time.
Peter, you have unmuted.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes. You, uh, tell us, give us your name and address for a record and just tell us you have a request for deferral. Just tell us the reason, please, yeah.
Certainly. My name is Peter Voltziness of Castles, Brock and Blackwell LLP.
Yes.
Um, our address is forty Temperance Street, and I'm appearing on behalf of four fifty-three Edlington Avenue West Limited. And, and so I would like to first just express my apologies for the technical difficulties earlier. We seem to have resolved those, so my apologies.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my submissions will be brief-
Yes.
-but they'll support the deferral request, which is, the main purpose of the deferral is mostly to allow time for the completion of the city's ongoing zoning review-
Mm-hmm.
-which is associated with the application, and that will help us confirm the finalized list of variances associated with this application. And we believe this will help streamline the process and save time and resources by way of this deferral. And so, in summary, I, I respectfully request that the committee defer consideration of this application to a subsequent hearing date. But I am pleased to answer any questions regarding this deferral request. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you, yes. Do we have any other speakers speaking to this item? So, yeah, we don't have any other speakers, so we, we, we are in committee to, yeah, uh, about the deferral request, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. It's very straightforward and understandable.
Yeah, and, and so, let's have a motion, Mr. Bayer, you have a-
Yeah, I'd like to move a motion to defer.
Uh, Mr. McKay, uh, uh, second, okay. Uh, all in favor? All in favor to defer? It's been deferred unanimously, thank you. And now we are on item number twenty-six. Item twenty-six is four, six, five, uh, Bathurst Street. This is the auto the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition, including a third-story rooftop terrace. And, uh, we are going for that also to construct a new one-story detached ossicular building, uh, one-car garage abutting the, uh, abutting the laneway. And we have, uh, so, a survey site plan for plan elevations, a revised site plan, and a red line notice from the agent, and one photograph of the property and a email corresponding from the agent. And we have received also one, uh, a position on be, uh, on behalf of four, six, seven Bathurst Street. And, uh, we, we are ready for the a- agent and, uh, please.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and, uh, one online speaker, but, uh, she confirmed just wants to observe, not to speak.
Oh, there are few speakers up here, yeah. Okay. So, uh, let's have the agent and, uh, and, it, it-
Hello, Madam Chair, committee members. My name is, uh, Victor Getberg. I'm an architect with Getberg Group Inc., uh, at thirty-three Ballader Crescent in Richmond Hill, and I'm representing the owners of, uh, four sixty-five Bathursts.
Thank you. Uh, since you have made some revisions, right, on the, uh, on the, on the, uh, the variances, can you go through, uh, the revisions one by one with us first before?
That is correct, Madam Chair. Uh, we, uh, received a letter of, of objection from, uh, uh, the neighbor from four sixty-seven, um, uh, Bathurst, and we, to address those, uh, their concerns, we modified two variances. Variance number one was, uh, uh, in regards to, uh, deck, uh, proposed, uh, deck setback. We increased it from, uh, zero point fifteen to zero point forty-two.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, by one foot, and also we proposed, uh, we proposed privacy screening of one point eight meters, uh, on the north side of the deck.
It's okay. So, uh, the revision on also variance six, right?
Uh, variance six as well, yeah. So that's, uh, related to, uh, roof width projection. Again, it was increased by, uh, one foot or thirty centimeters. Uh, and it appears to satisfy, uh, concerns neighbor of, um, uh, four sixty-seven. Unfortunately, the, uh, email confirming that was, uh, arrived late, it was uploaded, but probably you didn't have a, uh, opportunity to see it, because it was late, late, late condition.
Yeah, we got, we got that, uh, uh, noted. So, uh, okay, you do have some opposition. So can you give us a five-minute presentation? We, let's start from the, that was only the revision, yeah. Okay.
Absolutely, yes. So apart from, uh, apart from those revision, we're proposing a three-story addition to existing dwelling. Uh, so basically, um, to summarize the proposal, uh, we keep, uh, front facade and we keep existing roof height. So the third, uh, uh, level addition is mostly by, um, reconfiguring the, uh, existing roof, uh, allowing for more, uh, more space. Uh, the, uh, addition on the first and the second floor, basically they are matching the length of, uh, houses four sixty-seven, four sixty-nine, and many other houses in the, in the, on the same stretch of the street. And, uh, to minimize the massiveness of addition, we, uh, step back on the third level. So third level is shorter than to, uh, level one and level two, and it ends with, uh, rooftop terrace. Uh, and that basically related to variance number three of the building lens. Uh, variance number two is very, really very minor. Again, it's dealing with configuration of the roof. Uh, so, uh, main wall height is only, uh, four centi-, uh, ten centimeters, four inches deviate from, uh, maximum permitted. Uh, as I mentioned before, the overall height of the building stays within permitted limits, actually way, way below permitted limits. And, um, uh, then we have issue with soft yard, uh, rear soft yard landscape. It's about nine percent, uh, eight and a half percent short of soft yard landscape. Uh, but again, it's mostly, uh, existing condition, because right now the entire backyard, like, it, it has concrete parking pads, which, uh, soft landscape is even, uh, probably less than what we are proposing. But, uh, yeah, to accommodate this, um, laneway garage, we, uh, a little bit short on, um, soft yard landscape. Variance number six, I already, uh, we already discussed, and that's basically, that's, uh, summary of our proposal, and I, I can answer any questions you may have.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that, we will, uh, get back to you. Uh, we will want to hear the oppositions and come back to you, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
To you, Madam Chair, we don't have, uh, any registered speakers.
Oh, I thought we, we, we don't have.
We have, uh, one registered speaker, but she confirmed just want to observe.
Okay, so, um, all right, uh, let's bring back the agent. It seems that there are no other speakers want to speak, uh, or here to speak. So, uh, what they say, uh, uh, let, let, for, yeah. All right. Yeah, do we have questions, right? We have questions.
Yes, please, Chair.
Is he online, the agent?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Okay, so we have some questions for you, okay.
Just a quick question. Um, your, uh, rear yard soft, soft landscaping deficiency seems to be, and you can correct me, uh, related to the fact that your garage seems longer than your neighboring garage, your neighbor's garage. Would that be the case?
Uh, it, 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 yeah, the, you, you're probably correct. It's, it's longer than the neighboring garage, your, your garage.
I know there's no variance required for the garage itself, uh, but I, I, you do have a variance, uh, for, uh, soft landscaping, and I think that perhaps may be the problem. Do you have any suggestions as to perhaps shortening the length of the garage?
Uh, well, the, the, the reason our garage is a little bit longer, because if, if you, you can see from, uh, um, I, I, I believe so if it's, if it's shortened less to the garage, to match the neighbor garage, we're still gonna have, uh, some deficiency on, uh, soft landscape. We probably, we reduce it, but I don't think it will disappear completely.
It may not disappear completely. It certainly improve it, so-
It will improve it, I agree, yeah.
Because it, your, soft landscaping is, uh, you know, there's a reasonable deficiency that you're asking for. You also have a proposed deck that, you know, uh, the width of it, I'm not sure what quite the width, uh, can't quite see it, but, uh, whatever the width is, could that be changed sufficiently to mitigate the soft landscaping issue?
Uh, the deck, uh, deck actually is not that deep. So deck, um, uh, probably it's the minimum size of the deck to accommodate a couple of chairs and small tables. So, uh, I would rather, uh, maybe, uh, reduce the, uh, length of the garage and, uh, uh, maybe we can, in this case, we, we can. It, it's a bit hard to say, but what do you think if, uh, uh, like, if we, uh, reduce the, uh, I mean, increase the, uh, variance for, uh, percentage of, uh, soft landscape to forty-five, and then I can figure out by how much I have to reduce the length of the garage to achieve forty-five number.
That, that to me would certainly sound like, uh, a good idea, and if you're willing to do that and just, uh, calculate the, uh, square meterage for forty-five percent and present that as an, as an amendment.
Uh, yes, if you can give me one minute, I will do that, for sure.
Mm-hmm. Forty-five percent, okay.
Uh. Yeah, it gives me the number of forty-two, uh, forty-four.
Forty-two, forty-four, that sounds-
Yes.
Forty-two point four-four meter square.
Yeah, meter, square meters, that, that it will, it will be equal to forty-five percent.
That's good, uh, in- increase, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. That's revised to the, so, number five, uh, variance five revised to forty-five percent, equal to forty-two point four-four. Okay.
Just one question for me.
Yes, please, yeah, of course.
Thanks, Chair. Um, and just to confirm, you had talked about privacy screening. I'm assuming that's on the north side of the proposed deck?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And are you, one and a half meters, is that fine?
Uh, one, one point eight, we proposed one point eight.
Okay, thank you.
One point eight, okay. On the north side, okay.
Through the chair, the typical condition is one point five minimum.
Yeah, one point five, I mean, okay. All right, so, uh, any other questions, please? Yeah, so, uh, we don't have, we've thought we, they have some, uh, yeah, so now we are in committee, okay? Yes. Hmm. I think with all this revision, and I'm glad that, uh, Mr. Bayer asked for more landscaping.
Yeah.
I think that's an improvement.
I agree. Thanks, Aheer. I'm happy to make a motion on this one.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think that the improvement of the soft landscaping is, is very good, and I also commend the app, applicant for the changes they've made directly in response to the concerns that their neighbor to the north had. I think that's, um, sometimes that's all it takes, right, just making-
Yes.
-very minor changes and, and then gathering the support-
Mm-hmm.
-of your neighbor. So I think additionally, that it's not, it's a modest enough extension. It's not going deeper than the neighbor's, um, and so the, the impacts are pretty internalized to the site. Um, so I move we approve the application as amended.
Mm-hmm.
That's with three variances being amended, plus with the condition that privacy screening be provided on the north side of the proposed deck, um, to a minimum of one point five meters.
Mm, yes. Uh, uh, I just wanted to ask, if, if the revised, uh, soft landscaping, that, does it need to tie to the site plan, or it's not, it's not going to be-
I think the site plan would change.
Would change, yeah, yeah. So that, but they have to meet the, uh, increase, uh, not, okay, that's it.
Yeah, I'll second that, Chair.
Yeah, Miss Bayer, second. All in favor of the amended and revised, uh, all in favor, uh, approve unanimously, thank you. Thank you. And, uh, twenty-seven we heard and, um, twenty-eight, right? Number, uh, item twenty-eight is-
Through the chair, uh, so, item twenty-eight is the start of the three P M. time slot, so this would be a good time to take a fifteen-minute break if-
All right, yeah.
-members are all right with that, and staff.
I'll be opposed if time is pressed.
Okay, thank you. So we will reconvene in, uh, fifteen minutes, so.
We have to.
Yeah, we have to. So we will reconvene in, uh, fifteen minutes. Thank you. So we will reconvene in fifteen minutes, thank you.
Okay, we resume. Item number twenty-eight is five-five-five Saw Street. This is to alter the existing two-story, two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a new canopy above the existing front porch and a new rear ground floor deck with canopy and stairs. And a rear hot tub and a rear serial building, which is a pergola. Also to construct a one-story serial building garage in the rear yard abutting the laneway. We receive a copy of survey site plan, floor plan elevations, and revise site plan, floor plan elevations, and a red line public notice. We received three photographs of the property, email corresponding from the agent, and also presentation material from the agent. We also, we have comment from transportation engineering, engineering, and that we have support on Saw Street is five-five-three, five-six-one, five-six-three, and five-seventy-one. And we have letter of concern from, there's no address attached to this letter, but it's some, someone called Colucci, yeah, Ms. Colucci. And we are ready for the agent or applicant, yeah.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers.
Yes, we do have revisions to go.
Nick, you've unmuted.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. And please give us your name and address. And you do have some revisions. And let's go through the, go through the revisions first before we start with your presentation.
Sure. We'll start with my name. My name is Nick Allen from Replacement Design, speaking on behalf of the owner. And I can speak to the revisions I made if you'd like first.
Yes, we want to do that first, yeah.
Yep, yeah, certainly. So we did receive some communications from community planning regarding soft landscaping proposed. We made some changes to increase the amount of soft landscaping in the backyard based on their feedback.
Okay, and then can you just tell us the, it's variance number three and the, and the exact numbers, figures, please?
Uh, sorry, could you repeat your question?
Yeah, can you just tell, we have to hear from you, the revision. Tell us the percentage and also the area of the.
So the original proposal was for sixty-one point three-two square meters. And we have increased the soft landscaping to sixty-four point one. We did that by altering the proposed pathway in the backyard.
Okay, thank you. So that's the only revision?
Correct.
And also the revised site plan, you have a revised site plan reflecting that revision?
That is correct. The change is reflected on revised plans that were submitted.
That's great, thank you very much. And do we have other speakers? Oh, we do not have any other speakers. So let me see, we're going to check with the panel whether they require a presentation from you.
No, thanks, Chair.
No, no, any questions? No questions either?
Just, if I may, just a little.
Well, please.
Yeah, I, I am still concerned a little bit about the, the variance number three, even though you've now got it up to. even though you've now got it up to maybe thirty-eight point nine-four percent, which I think is still quite deficient. Is there anything else that you can possibly do to increase that number?
Yeah, we did look at that, I think, just looking at the site context, we do need to, or the owner will need access from, you know, the back of their house to the garage. I think we've tried to be as sparse as we can in terms of the proposed hard landscaping between the, the deck and the garage access. Kind of looking at that, we could shave off, you know, a few inches from that pathway and maybe gain ten or so square feet. Alternatively, we could eliminate the path altogether, but I think, you know, just in terms of functionality, being able to access that garage, there, there needs to be some sort of hard landscaping there. We, we have noted that it will be permeable. I think one of the main reasons that soft landscaping requirement exists is just the mitigation of stormwater on, on property, so we, we do want to make sure that what is put in there is semi-permeable in nature, so it does, you know, permit some, some management of stormwater.
So, could, could you perhaps give us a, a different percentage in the square meterage that we could, if you could, you know, talking about shaving off maybe a little bit from the path?
Sure, yeah, I can do that, so I think right now, the proposed width of that path is four foot six. If we bring that width down to four feet, let's say, I think that would bring the area of the path, I just have to do some calculations here, if you give me two minutes? Okay, thank you. Okay, so it looks like if I reduce that pathway width to four feet in width, it would, the total pathway area would be a hundred and sixty-four square feet, resulting in a proposed soft landscaping of seven-hundred-and-four square, square feet, or sixty-five point four square meters, which would bring the total proposed soft landscaping up to thirty-nine point seven-three percent.
That's great.
Thirty-nine point three-seven, you said?
Thirty-nine point seven-three.
Seven-three percent, okay.
And I wonder if I might just add, the added question is, the deck that you're proposing, is the material below the deck permeable?
It would be gravel of, of some sort, yes.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Yes, through the chair to the agent, sorry, can you repeat what the meter square would be?
Yep, certainly, so I have a total proposed soft landscaping now with that change of sixty-five point four square meters.
Okay, that's great. Mr. Byatt, very good negotiator, yeah.
Appreciate the agent's response.
Yeah, they do respond very well. Okay, so, any other questions? All right, so we are in, we are ready to move into discussion, do you have anything else you want to address the panel?
No, I think I would just note the kind of support from neighbors that we've gained, including the neighbor to the south, I believe, we've got five letters of support. Beyond that, I don't have anything to add, but happy to answer any other questions if there are any.
Okay, we're in committee now, yeah, very, very good, I, I think we try to, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to bring forward a motion, Chair. Thanks, Sahir, for making those suggestions and for the applicant for making the improvements. I, I think the variances are relatively minor, the, the side, the coverage one does look quite big, and the size of the garage, the, I mean, the, the maximum permitted lot coverage is five percent, but the garage is eighteen percent, that looks high, but it's really in, in line with, with what's permitted, with what's happening on this street. And this proposed garage is actually smaller than its neighbors and smaller, smaller than, than most of the, of the garages on this block. So I think it is defensible, I think these are small changes that will improve the livability of this lot with no impact, negative impact on the neighbors, so I'll move approval of the application as amended, and also with the condition that the, the rear walkway, the walkway in the, in the backyard be constructed with permeable pavers.
Yes, yeah, walkway, permeable, okay, the two, that's one condition, okay, thank you, anyone want to, a second? Mr. McCain's second? Yeah, all in favor of amended, yeah, all in favor of approved of amended agenda? It's approved, thank you unanimously, thank, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, so we move to item number twenty-nine, is three-six-four O'Connor Drive. This is to permit vehicle washing establishment use, other than, other than using automobile, automatic car operated or ride-through car wash establishment or facilities within the one-story detached building or contain, contain the existing automotive service center. We receive a survey, site plan, floor plan elevations, three photographs, and also the planning rationale from the agent. We have also received corresponding from, from Toronto, from Toronto building. And we are, okay, we are, besides this, do we have other speakers?
We have the agent here in person and two registered speakers for this item as well.
And they are in opposition?
And... One in interest and another one, we have, we have some questions and concern about this application.
Okay, so we should have an application?
And through the chair, it seems that the two speakers are from the same household, so they will be sharing the five minutes.
Yes, okay, thank you, welcome, yeah, and please give us your name and address, and we can start from there.
Good afternoon, Chair and members, my name is Robert Bader, B-A-D-E-R. I reside at thirty-eight Albany Street with an I and a Tobaco.
Yes, it seems that you have someone wants to speak to this application, you, we require you to give us five minutes presentation, yeah.
Well, I, I would, I would indulge the, the members, and my, my rationale certainly provides all the information that is necessary and available to answer any questions that the members and the Chair may have. I did speak with the, the other members that wish to speak to this item outside of the meeting, and it appears they just need some matter, points of clarification...
Okay.
...to allay any confusion that they may otherwise have, I attempted to do that but was not successful, so...
That's great, yeah, no, at least, I mean, that's the proposal, you reach out to them, and then that's, that's good.
Correct.
Okay, so any questions to this, anyone want to, no? Okay, we do not have any question for you, and do, do, is, are the other speakers still want to speak? Yeah, okay, let's, let's give them the mic, yeah.
Good evening, my name is Amir, Amir Gallo, I'm a co-owner of this house.
Yes.
Neighbor of, of, I don't know how to call that. I'm a one-house owner of, on Don Mills Road, you know?
So you are going to share the five minutes with the other speaker, right?
Yeah, something like that.
So you have give, you, you have two and a half minutes for your presentation?
Yeah, definitely.
And please, please state your address, please.
One Don Mills Road. And we don't oppose anything with those young people doing their, they, they decide business, and we really wish them good luck, we hope that they are going to do it according law, everything without harm, less for health and that kind of stuff. But we realized in those documentation that actually this survey is really old, it isn't how it looks now. And this is my concern, I don't know if survey, looking there, it isn't that, it's complete, completely different, it, it was just after World War Two, I think, you know, and I don't know, I don't know if, if you, if you tell me that it's okay, don't, any problem with that, I'm fine, but, you know, I like to have in documentation real stuff, means a real survey, and that's it. It was less than two minutes.
Through the chair, the agent can comment on their site plan, which should also be showing the current...
Yeah, proposal.
The current proposal of what's existing and proposed on the site, so the applicant's site plan should be showing that as well as an updated version, so we can, you can ask the applicant that to clarify.
Yeah, we will bring him up to, to address your concern, and then you, you, you're right, it seemed that it's a bit unclear in the current show.
This side is okay, just behind you, this is how it looks now, and if it's okay for you to keep that in documentation, I'm fine with that, and to save money a little bit.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And through the chair, we have an online speaker as well, the same address?
All right, thank you, yeah.
Hi, my name is Farido Shojai, I'm resident of one Don Mills Road. I don't have anything opposed to adding the car wash to this site, the only thing, I think my partner said the same thing, the only thing we want to make sure that the product that they are using is not hazardous for our health or our environment or the garden, and the disposal of this product is correctly for environment.
Okay, thank you. Any question to this speaker? No, no, we don't have any questions, so, thank you, we heard your concern, yeah, thank you. Any other speakers?
No, through the chair, that's all the speakers, we'll have the agent back to address the speakers' concerns.
Okay, yeah, so you heard the concern, it seems that they have a very old survey.
Correct, yes, and I was trying to explain that to the members prior to this, this matter. A survey is a submission requirement to file an so, committee of adjustment application, and that was the only available survey that we had. It dates back to nineteen forty-seven, the site plan, as staff had mentioned, is the, is the dominant article in respect of this application. The application doesn't even contemplate construction or renovations or additions or anything that would require a building permit, it's simply an expansion of an existing legal non-conforming use, so...
Yeah, that's my question, actually.
Yeah. The fact is...
Involve any construction?
The submission materials are redundant.
Yeah, usually if you involve construction, that just want to know, the neighbor know that, the building department might reject the old survey, but then that, since they're not going to build anything, they don't, they're not going to apply for a building permit, so the site plan is sufficient for this application for the committee of adjustment hearing, yeah.
Correct, pleased that you agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a quick question, so I take it the, the car wash is either one or two, but in the current service base that you have?
That's correct.
So it's all in, just internal?
That's right, it's internalized, but it is non-mechanical, that was the intent.
Very good, thank you, I am, I must just comment, I'm glad to see something from nineteen forty-seven still in business, which is great, thank you, a rarity in Toronto.
That goes for me, too. It's showing our vintage.
All right, so, yeah, any other question, please?
So it's touch us and it's done by hand?
Yes, yes, it's, it's, it's a hand wash.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Okay, no, no more question, we have no more question, we are in committee now.
Chair, when I saw this, I was very interested in noting, of course, the fact that this is an ongoing business and reading through the material, it's wonderful to see that historic timeline, but also the fact that it is, doesn't require any alteration of any kind, which is wonderful, so I don't see any issue, there are no conditions attached to this, so I'd like to move approval with no conditions.
Yes, Mr. McCain's second, all in favor? All in favor unanimously, except pool, thank you for coming, thank you, yeah. And now we have item number thirty, number thirty is forty-four Kent Road, this is to... I, okay, it's missing from this reading, the purpose for this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear second-story addition and a rear ground floor deck with stairs, and they're seeking for two variances, we receive a survey, site plan, floor plan elevations, four photographs, and presentation material from the agent, we also receive four letters in support from forty-eight Kent, Kent Road, and forty-six, forty-one and forty-six Kent Road, and also ninety-three Woodfield Road, and that's all we have received and we're ready for you, yeah.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent in person and no other speakers.
Just the agent, right, just the applicant? Please give us your name and your address, yeah, please.
Good afternoon, members of the committee, my name is Luca Penzo from eleven oh nine Queen Street East, and I'm here on behalf of the owners of forty-four Kent Road.
So since it's not contested application, so I will see whether we require presentation? No, and any questions, though? Yeah, all right, so you can see they don't have, even have questions, so do you have anything you want to address us before we move into discussion?
Nope, the application's as it was submitted, no changes.
Okay, now we're in committee?
Okay.
Yeah, that's it, that's the last chance, all right, so... We are in committee, I, I think this is pretty straightforward, yeah?
Thanks, Chair, yeah, it, there's just the two variances, and the depth is just a meter, right, so I think the incremental impact of that on the neighbors is, is marginal, and then FSI, but the fact that there's no length, that there's no depth to side yard setback, I think is great, I, I think this is a relatively sensitive way to add a pretty, a pretty sizable addition, so I'll move approval of the application with no condition.
Okay, Mr. McCain's second?
Yep.
Okay, I'm with no condition, all in favor? All in favor, it's approved unanimously, thank you, yes. And then we move to item number thirty-one, two-six-six Indian Grove, to permit of three, a new three-story detached dwelling, which is currently under construction with, with a building permit, and it will have front and rear cover basement walkout and a front cover porch with stair, and a rear ground floor deck with stairs, as well as front and rear terrace, terrace or balconies on the second and fifth floor. There will be a total of five residential dwelling unit on this lot, four units occupying the main dwelling and one in the laneway street, and there was, there was, the osteria building has two-story, and we receive a, a survey, site plan, floor plan elevations, three photographs of the property, and twenty photographs on neighboring property, and a cover letter from the agent and the decision affecting the subject property. We receive opposition from two-sixty-four and two-seventy-two Indian Grove, and we are ready for the applicant or the agent.
To you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and an online interest speaker and four speakers in opposition online.
Okay, so...
David, you've unmuted?
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Thank you, it's David Bronskill, three-three Bay Street, Suite thirty-four-hundred, Toronto, Ontario, continuing my day with you, here as agent for the applicant in this matter.
Yes, you do have some opposition, I think someone, yeah, will, will be speaking to this application. Yes, you do have some opposition, I think someone, yeah, will, will be speaking to this application, right? So can you give us a five-minute presentation then, please?
I, I can, Madam Chair, and I think staff, I'm gonna ask them first, they've got the notice up just to stay there for a moment.
Yeah.
And then the second place I'm gonna go, just so staff know, is item D, which is the plans. And I'll go there in a moment just to show the committee. I first wanted to, I have looked at the letters of opposition, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to flag two things for you at the outset. This, this is not about the construction activity on the site. And Madam Chair, I can indicate to this committee, my client acquired the site in April of twenty twenty-four after the previous note of, notice of decision. All of the construction that has been occurring on the site has been done pursuant to permits, building permits issued by the buildings department in accordance with that decision. There is a modification now to those plans that we would like to achieve that is a bump out on the second floor and a different use of the canopy, Madam Chair, and I will show those changes to you in a moment. But there is no illegal construction occurring on the site, and I'm not gonna go into it in any more detail other than that, because I know as well, that's not really what's before you. I just take that seriously and wanted to assure the committee that there are valid building permits for construction on the site. Secondly, there are some comments about the rear and a garage or parking area now becoming a laneway suite. Madam Chair, none of the variances deal with the laneway suite. Again, that unit, which we are showing on the site plan, is under construction, again, with a valid permit, but none of the variances before you are in respect of that laneway suite. The variances, Madam Chair, as you see on the screen, variance one deals with the height of a main wall. And I'm gonna show it to you in an elevation in a moment. The one thing I would just flag for you here is not the height, the setback. You can see that the zoning requires a setback of one point four meters and it's one point two. And so I will show you that on the elevations in a moment. It's not so much the height, but that we have the height of that main wall, point two of a meter closer to the wall in front of it. So I'll show that to you in an elevation in a moment. Secondly, variances two and three both deal with a second and third story bump out that we are seeking that would allow frankly more usable GFA on the second and third floor units. That's the marginal increase in the GFA, about twenty-two square meters. That's the decrease in the south side lot line, and it's only for the second and third floors. And then, Madam Chair, there are variances four and five, just over the page, that deal with a canopy that would have been at the front, that we would like to turn into a balcony. And I will show that to you as well on the plan. So staff, don't mind just pulling up D for me in the plans. And if I could start with the proposed ground floor plan, which is one oh one, if staff could just go down a little bit. You can see there, Madam Chair, the setback that allows access to the rear of the property. And then if you go down one more plan, staff, to one oh two, that's where you can see the bump out. So it's not at the ground floor, but it's above and frankly takes nine-foot width bedrooms on the ground floor, which are functional but a little bit tight, and allows them to be ten-foot width bedrooms on the second and third floors. That's the additional GFA, it's that bump out above the first floor. And again, I will show it to you on an elevation. Just while we're on one oh two, you can see on the right-hand side, top right, where there's, looks like a projection out the front, near the study area. That was a canopy on the proposed plans. We'd like to use it as a balcony. That triggers then the two variances that identified for you before to have that usable balcony at the front. And again, I'll show that to you on elevations. If staff don't mind then going down to number two hundred, which is the proposed front elevation, thank you. There you can see the bump out. So there's still good access up the side yard to the rear. It allows garbage bins that are stored at the rear to be brought out to the street, but it just does allow some additional GFA. And frankly, on the street, that side yard condition is very common. You can even see that the building to the north has an even tighter side yard to my client's north property line. But it's still allowing a generous opportunity for access to the rear while allowing that marginal bump out on the second and third floor. You can then see in that elevation on the front, that canopy with the railings being turned into a balcony. So I just wanted to show that to you there. If staff then don't go either of the side elevations, two oh two or two oh three, I can then use to explain. Thank you, there's two oh two. On the left-hand side would be the front. So again, you can see how that canopy on the porch is converted to a balcony. And you recall, I told you that the main wall height isn't so much the height, but where it is. And what we've done, you can see here, is above the second floor, there's a step back. It's one point two meters. If it was one point four, we would not need that first variance. And so that area is a third floor terrace. It allows frankly just twenty centimeters of additional third floor space to be deployed. But that's the variance. I'm gonna suggest to the committee, it's negligible in terms of its perception, one point four versus one point two.
Your five minutes up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that explains all the variances. I just wanted to make sure that the committee had that accurate picture, thank you.
Yes, thank you, yes.
If I may just ask a quick question?
Yes, please, yeah.
Mr. Bronskill, at the same side elevation, two oh two, at the rear, the third floor balcony is set below the same level as the front balcony. Is there some reason for that?
I'm just looking at the proposed third floor plan as it runs through.
But the four level, but the four level probably is the same though, there's only, the top of the railing, you notice the same.
Yeah, I think that, I think that is correct, I, yeah. I think it's the way it comes out. I think part of that third floor balcony is sunken in at the front, the third floor terrace. So there's only a partial railing, part of the dividing would actually be structure, if I could call it that, as opposed to railing.
And it looks like both the third and second level balconies have privacy screening, which is good to see.
Yes, and the previous decisions required privacy screening on both the north and south of all rear balconies. And we are, we are showing that screening. This, this sort of looks like it's open, it's not, it's, those are opaque screens on the rear balconies. We are happy to keep screening on all of those rear balconies. And Madam Chair, just so I'm not misleading the committee, I should point while that elevation was up, it, there's no step back at the rear for the main wall height there. But I also think it's different when it's at the rear than when it's at the front in terms of the streetscape. I just didn't wanna, have left that out because of time and be accused of misleading the committee, my apologies.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we, 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 we might have more questions for you, but then we want to listen to the oppositions first, right?
Of course.
Yeah, okay, we, yeah, next up to.
Hans, you're unmuted.
Great, thank you very much, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, so I'm one of the owners of two-six-four Indian Grove, the property just immediate to the south. My wife Catherine Reins, who also applied as a speaker and has also submitted a written form, is with me here, so we will use the five minutes together. I just wanna highlight three points to the committee, if I may. The, the first one is about, in direct response, what we just heard from the applicant, where it was stressed that the construction that is currently ongoing is all covered by the permit. But I wanna be very clear that the construction includes the second and third floor, including the bump out that is at the focus of this hearing here. So again, that should be made very clear to you, that construction is ongoing on the proposed variances here in the application, that's the first one. Secondly, we wanna point out a couple of inconsistencies in the application. As you read it, you said that there is an existing laneway house. I think we heard it from the applicant himself, that that laneway house is currently being constructed together with the main building. So the, you know, the classification as an existing building on the application is clearly wrong. But on the other hand, the laneway house was not considered in point, I think it was point three of the application that dealt with the, the FSI, which is solely calculated based on the, the main building and doesn't take into consideration the, the laneway house. So these are just, you know, a couple of items that we wanted to highlight. And, you know, in addition, we just wanted to express our concern that when, where it was last a discussion, that we were invited to contribute to the development of that property. The committee at that point made some very, very clear conditions about how the space could be used and what would be required if a fourplex is constructed. I'm very happy to hear that some of those conditions, like the privacy screening, is still being adhered to. But other parts of those conditions related to, to parking, for example, the trees have been completely swept under the rug here. And, yeah, frankly, we're, we're quite frustrated about this. But, yeah, these were the, the main points we wanted to raise, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any question to this speaker? All right, thank you, do we have more, more speakers?
David, you have unmuted.
Good morning, good afternoon, actually, committee. My name is David Wong, and I am the architect and the owner of the property at two-seven-two Indian Grove, three houses north of the subject property. And from the onset of this project, the developer has shown a complete disregard for the neighborhood. The typical courtesy of briefing the neighborhood on the proposed construction, or with these most recent variances, there has been absolutely no communication. Since commencement of construction, they have habitually blocked the laneway and the street and pose a continual nuisance. Not once have they had traffic control officer in place or a traffic permit to allow for these obstructions. They've also been confrontational about moving their vehicles and parking in front of the site when, when confronted. I state this to give the committee some insight into the character of the applicants. Another application for variances on top of the original granted variances for the same property should be subject to a two-year moratorium, similar to a policy that governs larger developments. It seems that the owners have broken their variance applications into two portions as it means to gain additional incremental concessions for the property overall. The density, coverage and height are no longer minor variances and combined pose a density that is too dense for the lot. The bump out is proceeding, it's already as if they have approval for the variance and a permit approval. It's, it's already there, it's already built, right now. They proceeded with construction on the laneway and the fourplex weeks before they were approved for permit and before these variances were approved. This was noted with the local building inspector, who refused to take action or issue a fine or stop work order. This course, this question has proceeded full speed without a permit and without approval. So this is now not how the system should work, sets a very bad precedent for the rest of the city. If this is passed, then as an architect, can I expect to have the same exact treatment on all of my properties? A development of this size should have parking, as the street is now saturated. Today, looking out my window before this meeting, there is one parking space. At the bare minimum, a parking study should have been commissioned to prove that the impact of the reduced parking has no effect. Multiple notices from the residents have been sent to the city about the illegal construction. To date, none of these resulted in a fine or stop work order. I would ask the committee to reject the request for these variances and set a two-year moratorium so that the less than honorable behavior is not rewarded nor sets a precedent for the builders to proceed with illegal construction without any fear of any repercussions. Should also be noted, during the initial excavation, it damaged an old growth tree that would have not allowed, because of the proximity to the property line, directly to the north, would have not allowed a laneway house. They purposely damaged it. Forestry has come, the tree's been taken down, and now there's gonna be, again, a laneway house that shouldn't have been there in the first place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, any question to this speaker? Okay, all right, so do we have more speaker?
Yes, yes. Alvin, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much, good afternoon, committee. My name is Alvin Wong, I am the homeowner of two-six-eight Indian Grove, the property immediately north of the property in question at two-six-six.
Okay, okay, you have five minutes, so tell us your concern, please, yeah.
Thank you very much. So I'm here, along with my wife, to strongly oppose the requested variances. What is before you is not a case of minor variances, it is a pattern of deliberate disregard for the city's rules and for this committee's prior decisions. I respectfully disagree with David's comment that the building is constructed according to approved permits because the building is already in construction prior to many of these permits and variances allowed. First, with respect to the main wall height variance and the setback, the main wall height variance, developers asking for ten point three four meters when the bylaw allows for eight point five. Despite the decision that was held on April twenty twenty-three, the developers gone ahead and construct the wall anyway, as of today. So if I were to take a picture and show you today, it's already there and before receiving committee approval. This was rejected back in April twenty twenty-three and the committee required a sloped roof. Second, on setbacks and FSI, the foundation has already been poured and the upper floors are already constructed prior to approval. The developers asking for the committee to approve the work after the fact. These are not minor variances, they changed the built form and reduced the separation from neighboring properties. Third, this is not an isolated incidence. The city did not approve for a laneway house back in April twenty twenty-three. Yet on May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, excavation began and killing the mature tree on my property. Urban forestry intervened, issued a requirement to take down the tree because of safety issues. By June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, the foundation was poured and the laneway was in construction. The laneway house was only approved after that, on July twenty-fifth. The applicant has not engaged in good faith. He has stopped responding to me since April, since July twenty-three and has consistently built first and asked for forgiveness later. I'm opposing these variances because, one, they altered the built form, already reviewed, and declined by the committee in April twenty twenty-three, where there are over fifty objection letters. Two, they failed to provide appropriate separation from the neighbors. Three, they are not minors, the developer has already sought variances with some decline, with some declined in twenty twenty-three and built a laneway house before approval. So for these reasons, I respectfully ask that you deny the requested variances, thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, any question to this speaker? Yeah, no, all right.
Derek, you have unmuted.
Pretty good case. I can respond to that. They basically gone, that's what I said, they went ahead and did.
Yeah, we all know that, yeah.
Hello, Derek, you've been unmuted.
Oh, you think it's us, oh.
Hello, Mr. Derek Cho of two-six-two Indian Grove, you were registered to speak and you are live unmuted.
Oh, we're, we're just, we're neighbors and we're just listening in. I didn't unmute it on, I didn't unmute it on purpose.
Okay, sir, you're registered to speak, so you do not wish to speak then?
Well, since you've got me here, I would just, I would support all the other people, our neighbors, in terms of what they've noted. And yes, they have gone ahead and, and, and gone ahead and built and we are aware that none of it was approved, so we're in full support of them, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, yeah, okay, do we have more?
No.
Oh, that's it, that's the end, okay, let's bring back the agent, Mr. Bronskill. We have five minutes to rebut the comments, yeah.
Thank you, Madam.
The concern, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. One, I think it's important, and maybe for those listening, the laneway suite does not require the variances, and there have been building permits issued for construction of the laneway suite. Going back, in fact, to submission of the permit application in September of twenty twenty-four by my client. September of twenty twenty-four by my client, and a permit issued in November of twenty twenty-four. And none of the variances are in respect of that laneway suite. And as this committee knows, FSI is a control on laneway suites, doesn't apply. So the notion that the the FSI of the laneway suite is somehow a mistake to be included, we we have gone through these plans with a zoning examiner, the variances are are accurate in front of you. Similarly, I I understand the concern about parking. I live in a neighborhood of the city where parking's at a premium. There are no parking variances required. There is no parking supply required. We're not here seeking any parking variances from the committee. And that's a rule that would apply to my client. It would be a rule to apply to the architect if, who spoke and asked that the rules be applied equally. It would apply to anything that he might work on. I I come back to the fact that these really are variances associated with three things. One, the second and third floor bump outs that allow better unit layouts for these rental suites, which is, I think, very important in this city. Two, the use of the front canopy as a balcony, and and I haven't heard any concerns expressed about either of those two matters. And then, third, the main wall heights. I I've looked at the old committee of adjustment decision. There was an elevation attached to it. I didn't see variances on it that were refused. There was a different roof design for that house, but the overall proposed height for that house was ten point five meters. The these are not significant changes from what was before the committee previously with a different owner back in April of twenty twenty-three. And I do think these tweaks meet the four tests and frankly just for allow for better rental suites in the fourplex. I didn't hear any concerns about impacts. I didn't hear any concerns about shadow, light, overlook. I understand friction that comes from construction. I am not going to get into it back and forth. The concerns are legitimate because they are said to you in good faith. I disagree with how they're being portrayed to you, and in fact, I disagree vehemently with the character of my client being raked over the coals by the architect who appeared in front of you. I don't think that's fair. I also don't think it's helpful or relevant. And all I can say is I hope there is better communication going forward by everyone. But that's the best I can do on those points for this committee. I can just come back to the variances before you and again say I truly think that they meet the four tests. They are tweaks to an existing proposal, and they do allow for a better rental housing product to be delivered.
Through the chair, I will state on behalf of the city and the comments that were made, our purpose does not reflect to legalize and to maintain because there was no order to comply violation listed for this property that we see. We don't have that on record, so that's why it's just to permit. It's not to legalize and maintain, just to be clear for the record.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, I didn't see any other orders to comply either, so, all right. So, thank you. Any question to the applicant? Okay. No? So are we ready to discuss this? Okay, we are in committee now. Yeah, all right. Okay, who wants to take this?
Maybe I'll just start off with some comments and observations. Again, I think what we've got in front of us are the three variances that are being requested. And I did note from Mr. Bronski's comments that the original owner, that the ownership changed.
Yeah, yeah.
So there is a new owner to this. And so when it, one of the photograph shows the foundations, I suspect, for the for the laneway suite, but that's not before us. And what we have are these three variances that are being requested. And from what I can ascertain, I think these are all acceptable variances.
Yes.
So as the variances that are being requested of us, I think they're, these are supportable. And some of the other comments that neighbors made, not before us, and that's not something that we can address.
No.
So, yeah.
Yes, I can add, I add the two things I'd like to, two comments I'd like to make. First of all, I agree with the applicants that the revisional, the additional balconies area and the plant, make actually the units are much nicer. And then they they're good-sized units, and also there's a little bit of a briefing outdoor space. It's a very desirable change, I think. And that's one comment I want to make is an improvement in that sense by adding a little bit more GFA. As a second, if we repeatedly hear a lot of comments on characters of applicants and all the, we just try to want everyone that a committee adjustment is not going to comment or take comments on characters, and 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 that's not part of what we we can do. And, okay, that's the two comments I'd like to make.
Yeah, I I agree. I I was on the panel that heard this last time, and I agree. I think this is, in its current form, is an improved proposal, partly because of the the outdoor space and and the slightly wider cantilevered part on the second and third floor. It make for good units. And we've been seeing a lot of fourplexes that have, you know, these extremely large and kind of overbearing outdoor staircases in the in the backyard. And I think this one's done a great job at internalizing all of that.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
So, yeah, I think that the variances, the variances are minor.
Yeah, it's less intrusive actually, but, yeah, the stair is more intrusive, I think, and not used, not not nice to see from the back, from the, excuse me. Okay. We have more comments, or we have a motion, please? Yeah?
For the reasons that the three of us have have gone through, I think that these variances being requested are minor and do meet the four tests. So I move that we approve, approve the application without condition.
Okay. Is there bias, a second, or in favor with no conditions? Or is them is approved? It's approved, thank you. Yeah. Item number thirty-two is sixty-one Mathew Avenue. This is the alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition, including a basement extension. And a rear deck with stairs and new stairs for the front porch or, and also to convert the existing rear one-story detached ossier building, which is a one-car garage into a shed for storage purposes. We receive a survey site plan for plant and elevations, three photographs of this property, and also response to to objection from from the owner. And we also receive opposition from fifty-nine Mathew Avenue, and that's all we receive, and we are ready for the application, applicant, please.
To you, Madam Chair. We have the agent online and no other speakers.
No other speaker?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, committee. My name is Tomasz Kvetz. I'm the agent for the sixty-one Mathew Avenue. I just wanted to ask a question before I begin the presentation. I spoke with, just two days ago, with the neighbor from fifty-nine, who who just did not understand the site plan originally, and after reading my letter and after conversation with me, he told me that he did withdraw that opposition.
His opposition, okay, thank you. That's good. That's one with, one question I'd like to ask. Okay, so since it means that it does no, it's not contested application, so I'm going to see whether we require a presentation first. You guys want, no? Any questions? Yeah, you do have a, yeah.
Just one quick question with regard to variance number four. You proposing sixty-one point eight percent or twenty-one point one meter squared front yard landscaping, is that somewhat of an existing circumstance?
All three of the points here are pretty much existing conditions. The only one variance that we we have is the one regarding the FSI.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so any more questions? So, so we do not have any more questions. We are in committee.
Great.
Okay. Yeah, we're ready, yeah.
Yeah, I I think this is a very supportable application, and I think the only concern I did have was, of course, the one I just mentioned. And I think the answer is quite, I'm glad to hear the answer to that. So I don't have, and there are no conditions to this particular application. So if my colleagues don't have any comments, I move to approve without any conditions.
Okay. Have a second to that motion? Mr. McCain, a second, all in favor of the conditions, all in favor, approve, you know, thank you very much. Yeah, it's approved, yeah. So do we need a break, or we we're going to go through, go through? You're good?
We only have a few more items.
Yes, okay. Item number thirty-three is five 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 Eastern Avenue. This is to alter the existing one-story, four-unit commercial building by converting unit one up, abutting Eastern Avenue and Hayward Avenue and into a showroom and a vehicle service shop, a BMW shop. There will be a total of five cars, lift, and four motorcycle repair base within the unit, also a five-vehicle parking spaces, including two accessible parking space, and will will be provided on site. And we have a copy of survey site plan for plants, elevation, six photographs of the property, and cover letter, and also a planning rationale and a presentation material from the agent and letter of opinion by some some person called Gang Shen Do. And and come, we receive comment from transportation engineering and staff report from TRCA, and we have received concern, a letter of concern from five forty-nine Eastern Avenue, and we are ready. Hi, welcome, yeah.
To you, Madam Chair. We have the agent here in person, and we have in opposition a speaker at one-ten Carlo Avenue, but unable to reach this speaker.
Also, we do have an opposition.
Through you, Madam Chair. There was a person registered in opposition. However, after multiple attempts, staff are not able to reach them. They are not online.
They are online, but do they provide a written opposition notice?
Through the chair, so their address was one-ten Carlo Avenue. I don't see anything in opposition from that person in the written documentation.
I see. But we do, we still do have one ex.
We just have the agent here.
Oh, okay, I I see. All right, so because the opposition here, we, our concern is from five forty-nine Eastern Avenue, so I, maybe you can cover some of what they they their concern is.
For sure. I can do that through the presentation?
Yeah, give us the name and address first, yeah.
My name is Jessica Yee. I'm a planner at Bowes Fields. The address is three Church Street, and I'm the agent representing the applicant for five hundred and fifty-five Eastern Avenue.
Thank you. Just let me check, because in that sense, there's no one speaking against it now. So let me check whether the panel wants to have a presentation. You don't need, Mr. McCain, you don't need a presentation? Right.
There's a lot of variances there. Maybe she would just give us a concise.
Okay, seems to be one, one, one or member would like to have a quick, yeah, five-minute maximum.
Great, okay.
Make a short do, if you like, yeah.
So I'm here today seeking the committee's approval for eleven variances to the zoning bylaw to facilitate the permitted vehicle service shop use within unit one of the existing building on the site. If staff could go to slide two, please. So the reasons for this application is that our client, BMW, is currently located at eleven Sunlight Park Road, which is located eight hundred and seventy meters west of the site. You may be familiar with its location on the DVP. But the business is currently being relocated due to the lot being expropriated for flood protection and the Broadway extension in East Harbor Transit Hub, a process that has been initiated and facilitated through a combined effort by the province and the city. BMW has been a longstanding business in the community and must relocate their business temporarily within the general surrounding area until they find a permanent location. And their level of service and presence serves the community and the broader area, and their business supports a number of jobs in the area. Our client has been working with the province and the city to find three available sites within the limited timeframe to relocate, as no single site in the surrounding area is able to accommodate the entire business. Each of the three temporary locations, including the subject site, are critical for the viability of the business. The site in particular is an ideal location for a portion of the business, as there are many similar uses in the surrounding area. As shown on this slide, the site is located at the southwest corner of Eastern Avenue and Heward Avenue, and we are requesting, only requesting variances related to unit one of the building, which is the area shaded in white on the slides and is located at the northerly edge of the building. Slide two, please. So this slide shows an aerial of the surrounding context, which includes a number of auto-related uses, including vehicle dealerships and service shops along this stretch of Eastern Avenue. Next slide, please. This slide just shows some photos of the site and existing building and surface parking area located along Eastern Avenue. And the bottom right photo also shows the loading and parking area at the rear of the site that is used by unit one. Next slide, please. So the site is designated core employment areas in the official plan and is zoned employment industrial under the bylaw. The vehicle service shop use is permitted under the official plan and bylaw, and the site is surrounded by lands generally designated core employment areas and neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So the requested variances are all shown on this slide on the loaning area, on the site plan on the left hand of the screen, and then the ground floor plan on the right hand of the screen. They are grouped into two categories. One is related to the existing built form conditions on the site, which pertain to variances one, two, three, five, and seven. And the remaining variances are all a result of these existing conditions. All of the variances are a result of the existing restrictions on the site, where the building and site configuration do not comply. The variances would facilitate the vehicle service shop use, and due to the existing built form of the site, would be required for any permitted use on the site. So we submitted a planning rationale letter that goes into further detail about the intended use and the four tests, but I'll just provide a quick summary on how the proposed variances meet the four tests. They meet the intent and purpose of the official plan, as they would facilitate the vehicle service shop use and an employment designation. They meet the intent and purpose of the bylaw, as the proposed variances would legalize the existing building and allow for the permitted use to exist on the site. They are minor, and then they would not result in a significant change to the area, as this type of use and the relationship between employment and residential uses in proximity to one another is common in this area, specifically along this corridor. And furthermore, no changes will be made to the exterior of the building. I will note that the concern from the neighbor at five forty-nine Eastern Avenue was related to noise impact, and we did submit a noise study as part of this application. And our consultant determined that there was no significant noise impacts on the neighboring properties created by the proposal. The study concluded that the noise levels would remain similar or the same as to what's existing on the site and in the surrounding areas today. And finally, the proposed variances are desirable for the use of the land, as the strategy would allow for BMW to maintain jobs within the surrounding area and for their business to continue to serve the community. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Maybe we we can hear the opposition first.
Through you, Madam Chair. They're not online. After multiple attempts, staff were able to unreach them. Yeah.
So we can ask the questions. I do have a couple of questions. Maybe I have missed, missed, heard, but correct me if I'm wrong. You said, you said this is, the proposal is only just temporary. You're still seeking for a more permanent.
Yes, this is, this is a temporary location.
So then then the question is, first of all, what's the current use of the building? Is it like abandoned building?
Unit one is currently vacant. Unit two, the rest of the building is commercial. I believe one other unit is vacant, and then the other two are occupied by commercial tenants.
So once a more permanent property is found, then you, BMW will move to build a permanent, what you call this, showroom. Same what's going to happen to this building? Then you will just, you just vacate and then you just leave it?
Yep, the tenant would just vacate. We're just, the applicant is the tenant for this unit, so not the owner. so not the owners of the building.
There's not an owner, so, so, you would just vacate and then, okay, so this, this is only, uh, do you know the projection of how many years that they, or how long they...
We anticipate that it would be under five years to find a permanent location. It would all be related to construction timing and finding a site.
I see, yeah, that's what I, I, I want to know. Alright, so, any other questions? Yeah, please.
Should we attach a timeframe to any approval?
Uh, I, I, I'm not too sure, uh, how, what, what do you, yeah, because you only project, it's a projection, you, you're not too sure, five year, you have to come back to the committee and ask for permission again, right?
Through you, Madam Chair, we would, it is our preference not to, um, impose a timeline on this application just due to the timelines of finding another site that's able to accommodate the business. And, um, for any future tenants as well.
Yes.
That would have to seek the same variances.
Okay, alright, thank you, any other questions?
No other question, but I, I think with regard to the timeline issue, I think, uh, whenever the BMW moves, my suspicion, and it's only a suspicion, is that the, the property will be left in a better state for, hopefully, a new tenant with similar type of business.
Yeah, 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 that's right, yeah, that's right, yeah, okay. So, uh, now we are in committees, sorry, yeah, I agree with you. And also that we have no really, any kind of base to, to make up, I do, I mean, to suggest a timeline that makes sense to the business anyway, we, we, I, I don't think, yeah.
Especially because it's a permitted use, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And I, I, in my opinion, it's a good, um, uh, project because you look at the existing condition, it's really utilize what's there and to, I'm so sure BMW make it very nice and improve the property.
Great.
I think so.
I was happy to see, uh, the noise study, I think, in response to the neighbor's concern. I thought that was, um, that was very res- rea- responsible by the application.
Yes, so we, we don't have any more, uh, we, we don't have any condition that we're going to approve, okay, no?
I can move this, Chair, I, I think this is a really good use for this spot, um, given it's, given the immediate surroundings and, and just given the nature of the site too. It's, it's a constrained site, but I think that this, and that's why we have all these variances, but I think that this use can really exist comfortably on that. So I'm happy to move approval without condition.
Okay, Mrs. Byers, second.
I'll second that.
And, uh, all in favor? It's approved unanimously, thank you for coming, yeah, thank you. So, uh, we, we, uh, we, we are on item thirty-four. Uh, it's one-twenty-two and one-twenty-four Avenue Road. This is to permit the interior demolition of the ground floor and the south side door temporarily opening to facility the removal of dirt for the underground basement, underpinning, underpin basement. Constructed without an authorized building permit on the existing one-and-a-half, uh, story detached building. Currently vacant and under construction. Also to alter existing one-and-a-half, one-and-a-half-story detached building by constructing a basement-level extension and a second-story addition, which is a mention in on the front second-story rooftop patio for new eating establishment. No loading space will be provided. We received a survey site plan for plans and elevations and thirteen photographs of the property and a cover letter from the agent. And we also received report from heritage, uh, uh, planning. And we have ordered to comply, uh, e- e- of the property. And we also received comment from, uh, uh, transportation engineering, heritage preservation and the staff report from, uh, from urban, uh, heritage planning, sorry. Hi, thank you, and that's all, uh...
Sorry.
Just want to check, yeah?
Yes, we have two registered speakers in interest and opposition at nineteen and eleven Bernard Avenue, but unfortunately unable to reach them.
Neither of them, yeah, and, uh, we have received written oppositions, right, we can, uh, I, I... I just want to give that chance. I don't see the, I don't see the in our file, but, um, okay.
Through the chair, I don't see any written opposition to this file.
Exactly, so we will consider this uncontested, then, yeah, alright. So in that case, that do we require a presentation? No, no, we do not require a presentation, any questions? At least have some questions.
I don't have any.
No, I don't have any questions, Chair.
Yeah, the, the, uh, may, maybe I ask for, uh, a question, the order to comply.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, and it was issue like, uh, this July, uh, what happened, uh, from that? Did you build something that you're not supposed to?
No, Madam Chair, firstly, I, I wish to introduce myself to committee, it's an honor to appear before you. I'm Eliezo Rogado, I'm the principal, uh, registered professional land use planner with Blackthorne Development Corp., representing our client. Uh, the order to comply was due to, uh, an innocent inadvertent hole that was made during the demolition. And since that time, a building permit has been obtained. In fact, Madam Chair, our client was punished by paying double, uh, the fee after the fact fee, even though the minor variance before you is two variances that are very, uh, minor in nature. The first one being a reduction in floor space index. And interestingly enough, the lawfully existing structure is of greater GFA, which I find humorous. And the second one being very common, when you look at the site location, being no loading space. Uh, so the order to comply, in essence, has been resolved, Madam Chair.
Okay, that, yeah, that's my...
And it's not associated with the proposal. And lastly, I'd add, even though you don't have the evidence before you, I'm sworn to give it to you as planner, our client did meet with the Annex Association and they're in full support of this application. And we're also in support of heritage condition for heritage permit, in essence, which would allow the design review to continue.
Yes, that they require, you require a, a heritage review.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's truly an improvement to the existing structure, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So we do, yeah, we do not have any questions. So anything else you want to address to the panel?
No, I just think you guys are a great committee, I sat all afternoon listening.
Yes, exactly, so, yeah.
You do a good job, so, hope you're looking forward to an evening break.
You sort of preserve some more energy for you, for sure.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay, we are in committee now.
Yeah, thank you.
That's good explanation, I was wondering why they have, they receive an order to comply, okay.
We'll be able to start off by saying, I, I think this is a, uh, straightforward application and I, it's, it's a great site. I, initially, I was concerned about where the rooftop patio is going to be, but I know that it's in the front. And that's, you know, perfectly fine, it has no impact on, on any of the neighbors at the rear. Um, and I think it could be a great improvement over what exists today. I mean, we keep driving past the property and I'm glad to see that it's getting a complete new facelift and revitalization. Yeah, it's true. Completely supportable. I think the, uh, the heritage wa- uh, heritage condition, you know, it's fine. It's not a, not a crisis kind of, uh, condition.
Okay.
Can you bring that into a motion, Chair?
Yeah, turn it into a motion.
Move that in, uh...
Oh, Mister McCain, yeah, oh, you second, you...
Motion to approve without, with a heritage condition, that's it.
Yeah, okay, uh, and Mister McCain, second?
Yes.
All in favor, uh, it's the heritage is cannot, don't have to be conditioned because they're required.
Okay.
I think they're required for a review.
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, but it's still a con- a condition.
Oh, alright, so we make it into condition, so you, you make sure you have the review done, alright. So all in favor?
Yes.
Yeah, approve with the heritage condition, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, the last item today is fourteen Liverpool Court Street. This is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with front and rear basement walkouts with stairs, a front porch with stairs and a rear ground floor deck with stairs. And second and fifth floor rear balconies. The current application is, uh, necessary to correctly identify variance number one below from the, from the approved minor aver- uh, variances they have. Uh, they seeking two variances. And, uh, for this, we have, uh, a copy of survey site plan for plan elevations and a decision affecting the subject property and also a tree protection plan. Uh, no, a tree, uh, we, we see comments, a report from the urban forestry, sorry, no, not...
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and no other speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, you unmuted?
Hello?
Okay, okay, yes.
Oh, hi, uh...
Yeah, give us your name and address, please, yeah.
It's Michael Muir, I'm at two-two-two-eight Wakefield Lane in Oakville. And I'm the agent acting on behalf of the client.
Okay, thank you. And since it is, and no one is speaking against this application, um, do we require a presentation or you have questions?
Very modest.
Yes, we do have some, we do not need a presentation from you, but we do have some questions, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, I was just noting that the second floor rear balcony, uh, it's one that may require privacy screening. I, I note that, that, that the third floor rear balcony is partially covered because you've got walls with what looks like, uh, a brick, a glass brick. Um, so I was wondering if I would, we could add a condition that the second floor rear balcony on both sides, I'm not sure what the directions are from the drawing that I'm looking at. Um, should you just have privacy screening on those, would that be something you'd be okay with?
Yes.
We have to find out what add...
Do you know what directions they are?
Yeah, direction, yeah, so that we can put it as a condition, right?
Yeah, so the, uh, that would be on the north and south walls and, and that would be, yeah, that would definitely be, uh, an acceptable condition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, so on the second floor balcony, north and south edges, right, okay?
That's correct, yeah.
Alright, got it. Any other, uh, question, please? So, we do not have any more questions, uh, we are now in committee. So, and that's a fourth street. Yeah, Gary, yeah, yeah.
I think the variances, the two, the cause of variances are, are high point minor. And, um, would move approval, uh, subject to condition number three and, uh, subject to, uh, privacy screening be put on the north and south, is it the second, uh, second, second floor?
The way, second floor, yes. Uh, it's taken, Mister Byers, second.
Thank you.
With the two conditions, all in favor? All in favor unanimously approve, uh, with those two conditions, uh, it's approved, uh, thank you very much. Um, we, that's our last item, we, the meeting or the hearing adjourned six fifteen P.M.
Thank you, members, thank you, staff, have a great night. Everyone, turn off your videos and mute and shut down, thank you.